Good afternoon and welcome to today's New York Council hearing for the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities and Addiction, joint with Youth Services. If you wish to submit testimony, you may at testimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time, please silence all electronic devices. Thank you for your cooperation. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Oh, gavel, yeah. I'll never get used to that. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here today. I'm personally still exhausted and recovering from yesterday. So apologies if I'm a little out of it. But my name is Lynda Lee, and I'm the Chair of the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities and Addictions. And I am very excited to be here today with my colleague, Chair Althea Stevens. And she's chairing the Youth Committee, Youth Services. And we're here today to do an oversight hearing on accessing mental health for New York City youth. And at this time, I'd like to acknowledge our colleagues who are Shawna Bray, Council Member Shawna Bray, who's here, and I know a couple of others are on their way, so we'll make sure to recognize them when they come. So I just want to thank all of you for being here today, because I know this is a topic that is very important for both Chair Stevens as well as myself. And as many of us know, the issues surrounding mental health amongst our youth have been an issue, or has been an issue, even prior to the COVID pandemic. And I think what we've seen, and there's a lot of data we're going to go through today, but you know, what we've seen is that, you know, the COVID pandemic has just exacerbated the issues that we already knew were there. And even before COVID, from 2007 to 2017, the death by suicide among youth and adolescents had increased by 56%, which is quite a bit over those years. And according to CDC, the reported incidence of self-harm and attempted suicides among people aged 10 to 24 in 2018 began to skyrocket in 2018. And then in 2020, it became a full-fledged youth mental health crisis. And another disturbing statistic is that in 2021, the self-reported depression and anxiety among adolescent youth increased by 4% amongst boys and 51% amongst girls compared to the same period in 2019. And one thing I want to emphasize is that we all know that these are the reported numbers that we know about, but this is not even touching upon the folks that have not reported these numbers due to a variety of reasons around stigma, language barriers, and other issues like that. So I'm sure that these numbers are actually higher in reality. And also, the depression in youth doubled during the pandemic. And so we know that these are issues ranging from adolescent brain chemistry, relationships with family, friends, peer pressure on social media, racial economic inequality, opioid epidemic, and gun violence are all contributing factors to the national emergency in youth mental health. And of course, the other thing that we know is that the big contributing factor in all of this is the lack of mental health workforce. And the mental health workforce, there is a huge shortage, which is also exacerbating the problem. And there's been a national staffing shortage for mental health professionals specializing specifically in child and adolescent behavioral health that has just made it worse. And the ER visits have increased by 24% in children ages 5 to 11, according to a report from CDC. And so the data, the trends in New York City really mirror a lot of what's happening nationally and a lot of what we're seeing across the nation. And so a lot of what we're going to be talking about today is hearing more from all of you in terms of what services are available. For example, I know that the city has a variety of mental health services through DOHMH, OCMH, MOPED, DYCD. And so we are looking forward to hearing from all of you in terms of how we can be helpful. And I know that for those that have been in hearings with me before, my interest and my sort of root and point of what I want to get at is how can we, as a city council, be helpful? Where are the barriers? Like, I'm really genuinely curious to hear where the barriers are in providing these services across different agencies and how we can be helpful with that. And one more addition to what has been attributing to the problem as well is that I know that there was supposed to be a whole redesign in terms of the inpatients, like beds, especially for adolescent youth. And it doesn't seem that that has been happening on the Medicaid side. And so, you know, how has this contributed to the problem? What can be done, especially when it comes to the inpatient beds and being transitioned into community-based behavioral health services? We have programs also like New York City Well through DOHMH, which is using the mobile crisis teams to provide interventions and support. And of course, through OCMH, we have a lot of different programs for support services. And DYCD offers also art-based activities to teens to raise awareness around mental health issues and encourage proactive approaches to self-care, which is also really great. And the FY23 budget in the City Council, we did add an additional $6.412 million in fiscal year '23 to address the negative mental health consequences and outcomes from the COVID pandemic crisis. But as we all know, this is not nearly enough. So if you think about it, $6.4 million in a budget of $101 billion is just a drop in the bucket. And so this is something that we need to continue to address. And just to go over real quick, I know that the funding that is administered by DOHMH is $1.787 for mental health services for children age 5 and under, $3.425 for mental health support programs for court-involved youth and families, and $1.2 million for comprehensive mental health services for LGBTQ+ youth in New York City, with the latter funding going towards comprehensive mental health services for vulnerable LGBTQ+ youth. So as I mentioned before in today's oversight hearing, we're really looking forward to hearing from you on what the challenges are, as well as where we can be helpful and where we, as a council, can put on pressure points as well to make your jobs easier and to help coordinate services. So I just want to thank, we've been joined by Council Member Tiffany Coban as well, so thank you so much for being here. And in closing, just want to thank the administration who are here, advocates, along with colleagues and staff, and especially our committee staff, Committee Council Sarah Suter and Senior Legislative Policy Analyst Kristi Dwyer, who both have incredible knowledge in this area as well professionally. So thank you both for your efforts. And testifying today, we have DOHMH Dr. McCray, our Executive Deputy Commissioner. And also for the Q&amp;A portion from DOHMH, we have Marnie Davidoff, Assistant Commissioner for the Division of Children, Youth and Families. And from DYCD, we have Susan Haskell, the Deputy Commissioner. And from OCMH, we have Director Eva Wong. So I will now turn it over to Chair Stevens for your opening remarks.
Good afternoon. I'm Councilman Althea Stevens, Chair of the New York City Council Committee on Youth Services. Thank you for joining us today for our oversight hearing on accessing mental health services for New York City youth. I'm pleased to be joined by my colleague, Council Member Lynda Lee, to discuss the topic as a pivotal moment when New York City is emerging from the COVID-19 pandemic, and we are evaluating how to integrate mental health services into the city's recovery. Mental health challenges in children, adolescents, and young adults are widespread. Even before the pandemic, an alarming number of young people struggled with feeling of helplessness, depressions, and thoughts of suicide. According to 2019 Thrive NYC report, nearly 270,000 youth between 5 and 17 years old in New York City believed to have been diagnosed with a mental health disorder. For 134,000 of them, symptoms were severe enough to impact daily functioning. The pandemic only added to existing challenges that youth faced by disrupting in-person schooling and social opportunities they relied on for support. The pandemic's negative impact on most direct affected those who were vulnerable to being with such as youth with disabilities, racial and economic minorities, LGBTQ+ youth, and homeless youth. DYCD's programs are an important developmental building block for New York City youth and adolescents. Those safe spaces are resources for family where the cities can normalize the messaging that mental health is an essential part of overall health. I'm excited to see the Mayor's Office of Community and Mental Health recognize this vital entry point through its partnership with DYCD on the pathways to wellbeing initiatives. However, mental health services within DYCD programs are still lacking. I look forward to learning more about this partnership, including any plans to build out social, emotional learning curriculums, evaluating the existing programs, and get a better understanding of mental health libraries to community centers, to cornerstone centers across the city. DYCD also supports mental health services riders through critical work to house runaway and homeless youth. Under the former administrative support for wellbeings of LGBTQ+ runaway homeless youth was a priority under Thrive NYC, which has since been reorganized into the Mayor's Office of Community and Mental Health. There were several youth-based mental health initiatives previously under Thrive's banner, and I'm eager to learn the status of those programs and any future plans to support those vulnerable populations. I would like to thank the staff of their hard work in preparing for this hearing, Policy Analyst Elizabeth Atlas, Artless? Arts, sorry, as well as my Chief of Staff, Kate Connolly.
And special shout-out to Tyreek Israel, my Deputy Chief, who is here at his first hearing, check him out, and the rest of the 18 back in District 16, holding down the fort. I will now like to turn it over to Committee Council to go over the protocol items.
Thank you, Chair. We will now hear testimony from the administration. Will you please raise your right hand? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Council Member questions? You may begin when ready.
Good afternoon, Chair Lee and members of the Committee on Mental Health, Disabilities, Addiction, and Chair Stevens and members of the Committee on Youth Services. I'm Dr. Michael McCray, the Acting Executive Deputy Commissioner for Mental Hygiene at the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. I am joined here by my colleague, Marnie Davidoff, who is the Assistant Commissioner for the Bureau of Children, Youth and Families. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on behalf of the mental health of youth in New York City. I would also like to introduce, I'm also joined by my city partners, who are here with us today, from the Department of Youth and Community Development, Deputy Commissioner Susan Haskell, and from the Office of Community and Mental Health, Director Eva Wong. As our Commissioner has made clear earlier this year, the second pandemic of mental health is one of the top priorities of the city of New York. Chief amongst these priorities is our youth mental health crisis. As a parent myself, and I know the Commissioner shares the sentiment as a father as well, there are clear and observable ways, clear and observable ways in which the mental health and wellbeing of every child has been negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Some of these impacts show up in our data, while others show up in everyday lives of parents, caregivers, and as keepers of our city's children. A year ago, the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and the Children's Hospital Association jointly declared a national state of emergency in children's mental health in response to the alarming rates of youth experiencing pandemic-related emotional distress. A few months later, the U.S. Surgeon General issued a rare advisory on youth mental health crisis, calling for urgent action in this matter. At the White House, the Biden-Harris administration has centered this issue within their larger mental health agenda. These trends were also evident in New York City, where the COVID-19 pandemic had and continues to have a substantial effect on the mental health of children and youth. The COVID-19 pandemic disrupted school and other social activities that were critical to children's wellbeing and development. The pandemic also led to greater insecurity in housing, food access, and community safety for many families, which are important social determinants of mental health. This is say nothing of the direct trauma our children have faced. According to one study, an estimated 8,600 New York City children lost a parent during the pandemic, an event which can have profound psychological, social, and economic effects for young people and their families now and into the future. At the time of that survey in 2021, 28% of adults with children in their household reported that emotional or behavioral health of at least one of their children had been negatively affected by the pandemic in the prior two months. Our mental health providers have also reported sharp increases in the number of youth experiencing acute crises and have shared their challenges in meeting the increased demand for care. We have observed an increase in our referrals to our children's mobile crisis teams. Referrals were higher in 2021 than prior to the onset of the pandemic, and the trend has continued into 2022. We're happy to report that we've been able to meet the increasing demand and need. The uptick in the demand for youth crisis services will place a strain on the mobile crisis teams and our city's mental health system if it continues to go in this direction. Unfortunately, Black, Latinx, and Asian New Yorkers have experienced disproportionate health and social burdens from the pandemic, and mental health is no exception. This is on top of the racial disparities in youth mental health predating the pandemic. We're still awaiting for final data, but pre-pandemic, between 2009 and 2019, there was a significant increase in the percentage of Asian, Black, and Hispanic students who reported having seriously considered attempting suicide in the past 12 months. Despite the broader decrease in the percentage of public high school students that reported having attempted suicide in the prior 12 months, the percentage of Black students increased between 2013 and 2019. Given these data and what we currently know about the mental health and social consequences of the pandemic, we're closely monitoring these trends. We have not allowed these data lags and paucity of information to stymie action here. But before I talk about our work, I want to share some framing, which may help elucidate both challenges and opportunities. As you know, much like the healthcare and adult mental health care system, the youth mental health landscape is large, it's complex, and it's made up of public and private systems. Oversight and administration of the treatment system in New York City is largely conducted by the New York State Office of Mental Health. The Health Department works closely with the state in carrying out certain functions, and we work alongside several New York City agencies in administering elements of the youth mental health system, including to close gaps in services and support children and families at times and in places where they most want and can benefit from the services. We also rely heavily on a complex array of, sorry. We also rely heavily on, I'm sorry, I lost my space. We also rely heavily on a large and complex array of community-based mental health care providers to deliver youth mental health services. This is say nothing of youth mental health programs in schools, after-school programs, athletics, at home, and other places where children spend the majority of their time. In this way, the youth mental health system does not look or operate like a traditional healthcare system that focuses mainly on brick-and-mortar care and clinical facilities. Rather, it is designed to meet children and families where they are, with the services that they need, where they need them, which take various forms as described above. As a result of this complexity, entry points into the youth mental health care system is similarly complex. While it's good to know that there is an attempt to facilitate a no-wrong door into help, it's important to know that children and families should know where they can turn to help for when it's needed. NYC can help youth, parents, and other child-serving systems navigate to the right level of care. NYC Well, or the National Suicide Prevention Hotline, 988, can also provide in-the-moment support to youth who are in crisis, as well as connection to services and treatment. And they can refer to mobile crisis teams. Clinicians can access our children's single point of access, otherwise known as C-SPOA, and that's a system to help make referrals. And many of our civic agencies like DOE, ACS, and DHS each have systems set up to connect children and families with mental health supports and services. From the start of this pandemic, the city and the Health Department have been working directly with our contracted providers to provide, in a few different key ways. First, to help them transition to telehealth and virtual platforms. Second, to identify new ways to deliver services and keep clients engaged. Third, to share information, resources, and conduct trainings to support providers' ongoing operations, covering topics such as managing staff burnout, grief and loss, and much more. Fourth, we helped to create a platform to address staffing needs many providers were experiencing at the time. We also worked to expand bereavement services and support for children who lost a parent or caregiver by increasing the following services: screenings and referrals for children and families, short-term loss and bereavement support groups, education for mental health providers, teachers, and agency administrators, coaching and office hours for any staff person working with bereaved children. We also hired 120 Public Health Corps members on childhood grief and where to refer bereaved families in need of support. And these team members were deployed in community-based organizations in the most affected neighborhoods. The city has also worked in a coordinated way, under the Health Department's leadership, to reach out, to reach youth and families, and make connections to services and build resilience. With the Mayor's Office of Economic Opportunity and the City University of New York Center of Innovation in Mental Health, we have partnered with community-based organizations to improve access to mental health resources for youth. This initiative will train CBO staff to identify and support mental health needs of youth and young adults ages 13 to 21. The Health Department has made 12 of 33 awards to date, and trainings will begin in the fall. Recognizing that schools are a critical venue through which to identify and address youth mental health needs, we're working closely on a multi-agency effort to develop a school mental health continuing project to integrate mental health services and support for students, their families, and school staff at 50 DOE schools located in Brooklyn and the Bronx. These schools will receive clinical services, education on available resources in children's and the system, such as NYC Well and Children's Mobile Crisis Teams, and training in collaborative problem-solving, which is an evidence-based approach to engaging and building relationships with youth who are demonstrating challenging behaviors. In support of the Adams Administration's commitment to addressing the youth mental health crisis, and under the leadership of Deputy Mayor Anne Williams Isom and Commissioner Vasan, the city has been leading in an inter-agency and multi-stakeholder working group tasked with developing the city's first framework on child, youth, and family mental health in three decades. The framework, which will be released in early 2023, will be centered on creating and strengthening a system of care in New York City for children and youth with behavioral health needs and their families and caregivers, which is rooted in prevention, early detection, and treatment, equity, and delivered when, where, and how children and families need them. I would also like to note that the Adams Administration has taken an upstream approach to our city's youth mental health crisis through critical investments in early childhood and youth employment opportunities. The $100 million commitment for a forthcoming childcare quality and innovation initiative announced in May is an investment in the ability of caregivers and parents to provide support and care for their children while giving them the social and economic opportunities they need to provide for their families. Similarly, the expansion of the Summer Youth Program by more than 15,000 slots is in many ways an investment in the present and future wellbeing of young people by providing economic and social opportunities to youth who wouldn't otherwise have it. Both of these programs are mental health bonds, investment today in long-term wellbeing, resilience, and mental health of our children and their families that will pay off for years to come. This is exactly the kind of comprehensive approach that is needed to address this ongoing crisis. The solution will be upstream and downstream, in prevention and in care, and will live in health and socioeconomic arenas that are protective factors for health, mental health, and wellbeing. I want to take a moment once again to point to my colleagues from DYCD, who will be able to speak to the work they are doing upstream to promote mental health among youth and communities, especially those of color, through program engagement, professional development and training, technical assistance, and resource sharing, special projects, including work to support runaway and homeless youth. These are just highlights of the work currently underway to address the mental health needs of youth and families in NYC. We remain committed to using data to identify and address the mental health needs of New Yorkers, no matter their age, and remain committed to closing health disparities caused and perpetuated by structural racism. We also rely on the feedback from our community partners and City Council to advance our work. With that, I want to thank you for your continued partnership, feedback, and support. My colleagues and I are happy to take your questions.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, so I had a bunch of questions before, and then I have more questions after you give your test. I was taking notes, I'm sorry. So let me actually start with the questions that we had before, which is, just out of curiosity, because I know that as a former nonprofit person that had, for example, different city contracts with DOHMH, DYCD, for us, we had to almost, and I know Chair Stevens also has the nonprofit experience as well, where, you know, we're sort of in the middle, and we're almost doing the intercommunication between some of the agencies and just wanting to know, because there's a lot of services that you guys are providing, and so how is DOHMH partnering with DYCD in terms of, like, what are the process or mechanisms that are in place to ensure seamless communication between your agencies, because there is so much overlap in terms of the populations that you're serving in the youth side? So.
So I'm going to just kind of, again, do a little bit of framing. I mean, I mentioned in testimony that the system is very large, it's complex, it really runs the gamut of services, from a light-touch counseling at NYC Well to very kind of intensive services across different settings, up to including residential. We work with the state, with the city agencies, community partners to provide this service, and obviously, I mean, that makes it a very complex system to kind of, to work. But we are committed to working and collaborating with both all these partners. I'm going to let kind of Marnie talk a little bit about kind of how that looks on the ground. But just as a reminder, it is kind of this really kind of complex system that you are well aware of.
Sure, yes, I'm happy to speak about some of the collaborations we have with other city agencies, as Dr. McCray mentioned, right? Mental health services are offered within many youth-serving systems. For DYCD, well, first, I should mention that obviously, the Children's Cabinet is a place where various child-serving agencies, the agencies come together to discuss issues that are related to, you know, to children's health and wellbeing, including their mental health. And I also wanted to point out a recent collaboration that DYCD, and I'm going to ask Susan Haskell to speak more on this, but that they spearheaded and led, which resulted in their convening multiple city agencies, including DOHMH, to come together to figure out how we can better address the needs of youth served through the runaway and homeless youth programs. So Susan, if I can hand that over to you.
Thanks, Marnie. I do think that's a great question, and some of the things that came to mind, in addition to the Children's Cabinet, where we've worked recently, I was, I think, last week with all three of my colleagues here, as well as dozens of other at a mental health council meeting, where we had the opportunity to share some of the initiatives that were going on, so that we're aware of each other's work. DYCD facilitates the Inter-Agency Coordinating Council on Youth, where we bring together all the city agencies that have work with youth to talk about our activities. And then somewhat recently, the mayor and many city agency leaders announced, "Opportunity starts with a home," at the Sheltering Arms Runaway and Homeless Youth Drop-In Center, I think that was in August. And that is a robust collection of commitments designed by young people with lived experience in partnership with government leaders about how to support runaway and homeless young people, and Department of Health and Office of Community and Mental Health are key partners in that work. I think that's one of our main focuses of partnership right now, this fall, is launching some of those efforts. But I also think, you know, to your point, our work has to be infused. Our connection points are at many different layers, at different levels in the organization, and we try to, you know, just maintain those strands to support programming.
Yeah, because I guess, you know, someone who, let's just say, is struggling with various different mental health issues, like, they may also come in at different access points, right? So they may be inpatient at first, and then how do you make sure that there's a smooth transition for supportive services? And then vice versa, you know, they may be in an after-school DYCD beacon program, and then if you see and then if you see signs and symptoms, how are the staff trained? And is there a way to refer them smoothly into different agencies within the city, right? And so I guess, I guess my question is, because what, what is, so what would be the biggest barrier of that? Because I know, I don't know, if I had a pie in the sky dream, it'd be to have a comprehensive database where you guys can all communicate with each other. But I know that, um, you know, that's, that, like, what, but what are the biggest barriers that you are finding? Because I know for, for DOHMH, I would imagine some of it would be HIPAA-related or something related to privacy. And, and for D Y C D, I don't know if it's just that, I mean, is there a, an inter-agency way of communicating uh, more efficiently online in terms of referrals, uh, what would be the biggest challenges? And also, is, I would imagine it's also a lift for the staff at the agencies to also be aware of all these programs. And so how are you also disseminating that communication as well?
Definitely, uh, um, a challenge that we, you know, that requires constant attention as through many of those channels that I mentioned just previously is our way of like keeping information flowing. And I'll just, speaking for D Y C D, another layer of that challenge is that we do our work through community-based organizations. And they are the ones in direct contact with young people and their families to identify issues where they need help. So we have to also keep the, that information flowing to the CBO who is then like dealing directly and in terms of like, that kind of confidentiality issues, we don't necessarily have that. We're not identifying young people to send to Department of Health, but our CBOs are and they need to know where to go. They've got to have the resources guide we're putting together, know where those, those, um, uh, resources that, um, Dr. McCray mentioned are, how they're avail- where they are and how to access them.
Right, yeah. Um, and do, so for DOHMH, um, do you also have an understanding of which organizations, um, have the D Y C D contracts? Because I would imagine there's a bunch of groups that overlap between your two agencies. And so is there a comprehensive list of which CBOs? Because to your point, I do think that a lot of times the CBOs are sort of like that, that middleman person. And so is there a list somewhere that you guys can compare?
We, we do that, um, like sort of on special projects needed, but we would be happy to refresh that list, um, for Department of Health and make sure you have a complete list of the D Y C D-funded community-based organizations. That's a good idea.
Okay. Um, let me see. Oh, and the DOHMH webpage, it, it lists the hospital psychiatric emergency rooms under its section on child and adolescent mental health emergency crisis services. Um, so can you tell us how many hospitals in New York City have psychiatric emergency rooms for children specifically? Which I know is tough.
I'm sorry, would you mind repeating the question? How many hospitals have, um?
Oh, on the webpage, it, uh, it lists, uh, the DOHMH web pa- webpage, I'm sorry, it lists hospital psychiatric emergency rooms under its section on child and adolescent mental health emergency and crisis services. Um, so I just wanted to know if you could tell us how many hospitals in New York City have psychiatric emergency rooms for children?
Um, so I would need to get back to you on, um, the licensed, um, those that are licensed for, um, for children because it is under the state's licensure, but I can absolutely follow up with you, um, on that. I can also share that, um, we have, um, a program that enhances, um, the psych- the emergency rooms, um, or CPAPS, comprehensive, comprehensive psychiatric emergency programs in H and H facilities by, um, offering, um, additional child-focused social workers in those emergency settings so that even if they're not, um, you know, sort of licensed or not licensed, but robustly sort of staffed for, um, serving the needs of children in psychiatric crisis, they have enhanced staffing resources that specialize on youth populations.
Okay. Um, and do we have a sense of, um, how many groups and organizations provide services to those thirteen and under? Because I know that's a separate altogether license that, that, you know, it requires different specialization. And so just wanting to know, um, you know, how many organizations that you all work with that you know of that have, um, services that provide for thirteen and under around mental health?
Sure. And so just to, to also reiterate, um, what Dr. McCray offered before, um, when I answer the question, I think it's important for me to distinguish between the tr- treatment and other programs that are licensed by the State Office of Mental Health, um, and those that we contract for through the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Um, so I can mention that, um, through the Department of, of, of Health and Mental Hygiene, we have, um, contracts, we have about fifty-one different contracts with about eighty-nine different programs serving various ages of youth and depending on the program, um, there are some that serve early childhood, that are, that are some that serve, you know, um, up through twenty-four for transition age youth. So, um, it really ranges, um, in terms of the ages covered by those programs.
Okay. Um, and can you also provide an overview of DOHMH mental health services and programs for young people? Which I know that you sort of went over briefly. And, um, has, has DOHMH noticed an increase in the use of these services since the start of the pandemic in March twenty twenty? If you could go through some of that data?
Sure. So I'll leave, I'll leave it to kind of Marnie to go kind of into the kind of some of the programmatic stuff, give you some examples of some of the state and, um, and city-sponsored, um, programs.
Sure. So, um, there is a really wide array of, um, types of services that we contract for. Um, one of the types is our crisis portfolio and that has various program types within it. So we have Children's Mobile Crisis Teams, um, we have home-based crisis intervention programs which, um, are serving youth in their home and community in a, in a sort of intensive manner. It's usually from a four to six-week, um, period of time and those are citywide. Um, we have, um, also some sort of more like what we consider to be supportive services. So examples of those would be like our cure coordination programs. We particularly fund those for, um, youth who do not have Medicaid because there's a comparable, right, Medicaid-funded, um, service called Health Homes for those who do have Medicaid. Um, we have, um, services that, uh, work with adolescents particularly called Adolescence Skill Centers, which really focus on vocational and educational skills and helping them to achieve their own, you know, goals with, within those domains. Um, we have early childhood mental health services, which are really, um, a mix of, um, treatment services focused on ages zero to five. Um, and particularly in relationship to the parent or caregiver, they also provide maternal mental health care and, um, have family peers that are embedded in those programs to provide additional support to the families. Um, they also do consultation to other child-serving settings. So it's a really wide, that initiative has a really wide range of domains to it. Um, there's, I mean, I could mention, uh, many others. We have, we fund family and youth peer support services, um, loss and bereavement services, all right, for youth who have, you know, experienced the loss of a, of a close family member. Um, and, um, yeah, there's a, there's a wide range of others, which I'd be happy to speak more about or to, you know, provide more details after today's hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, in twenty twenty-two, it's funny, when I saw the acronym, it says MMR, which is not measles, mumps and rubella. It's the Mayor's Management Report, sorry. So, yeah, so in twenty twenty-two, the, the Mayor's Management Report, um, it discusses the provision of the intensive mobile treatment, uh, which is a program that's featured on the OCMH website, but it's implemented and funded through DOHMH. And, you know, the IMT teams provide intensive and continuous support and treatment to New Yorkers with serious behavioral concerns right in their communities. Um, and then, you know, in the past, in other hearings, I've definitely mentioned, I think, it's, it's confusing sometimes because there are so many mobile outreach teams that are out there, depending on which agency. Some are provided by the state, some are provided by the city, um, and then each, you know, different agency has their own version. And so, um, I just wanted to know if, for the IMT teams specifically, um, do OCMH or DOHMH have any data on the ages of whom IMT teams serve? And if so, what percentage of those individuals were under age twenty-one?
So I'll take that question. Thank you. So, yeah, we, we have discussed, um, the intensive mobile treatment teams here and we have discussed kind of all the different, uh, treatment, uh, mobile treatments. Um, this is really a service that is really for people who are, have very complex kind of, uh, situations. Um, for those of you who may not be aware, um, you know, that's an addition, that's an initiative that's really kind of centered in our adult mental health system. Um, although it's run by that sys- that the mental health system or the team, it's really available to youth, uh, who are transitioning to adulthood, um, beginning at age eighteen. Um, so IMT provides, uh, mental health and substance use treatment, uh, includes medication, other supports, uh, for people with serious behavioral health concerns, uh, who live in kind of very complicate, complex life situations, who are transient many oftentimes and who have involvement in the criminal legal system. Um, so we can't really share, uh, the percentage of people under twenty-one who are receiving IMT. Um, but I can share that ten percent, uh, of the people receiving IMT are in the eighteen to twenty-four-year-old category.
Okay, that's helpful. And how has, um, sorry, before I continue, I just want to recognize Councilmember Palladino who has joined us as well. Um, and, and just out of curiosity, because how has the, how has the staffing been on that program as well? Because I know just across the board, it's been really challenging in terms of the workforce and finding staffing. So how has it been for this particular program?
I mean, as you know, I mean, I, it's like, it's, I mean, it's been challenging, uh, just to sta- to staff many, uh, programs that are providing, uh, services, particularly mental health services, uh, as you know, social workers. There's, I mean, all the different kinds of, uh, uh, health or help-seeking professions are having challenges with, uh, with, uh, getting people to provide services.
Um, is it mostly just folks with like, for example, LMFTs or LMHCs, LCSWs, LMSWs? Or is it someone who could be certified and trained? It does, or do they have to have a specific, uh, master's degree level behavioral health?
There are a number of different people there on, on, on each team, so it would vary.
It would vary, okay. Um, and also, according to that same report, uh, the Mayor's Management Report, supportive connections provided by New York City WELL surpassed the fiscal twenty twenty-two target due to an increase in funding, um, additional call center staff and an increase in the number of contacts answered daily. Um, do you have data on how many New Yorkers under age twenty-one have been connected to mental health services through NYC WELL since March twenty twenty?
Um, yes, I'm happy to speak to that question. Um, I just wanted to share some context also that, uh, before I share some numbers, those who contact NYC WELL are actually not required to reveal their age, you know, or, um, or the age of the person on whose behalf they're, they're calling or texting. Um, so the age-related data that we share will, will likely be an undercount, right? Um, because we, there are, there are, you know, um, those who contact NYC WELL for whom that the age isn't revealed or identified. Um, and, um, you know, the, um, so the data that I'll share also is the way that the data are collected. Um, it's really in categories, um, so in categories of, uh, four-year sort of age blocks. So what I can share with you is that, um, for, you know, um, birth through age twenty-four, um, we have, um, received about approximately sixteen thousand contacts in FY twenty, uh, fifteen thousand nine hundred seventy-six to be exact. For FY twenty-one, it was twenty-one thousand and eleven contacts for that age group. Again, where we know that, where we know the age of the person contacting, um, or, you know, the person on whose behalf they're contacting NYC WELL. And then for FY twenty-two, it was twenty thousand eight hundred fifty-four contacts.
Okay, thank you. Um, one of the things that was actually in the report that I noticed was, um, could you tell us a little bit more about the, um, the Children's Single Point of Access? I was very curious about this because it's, it's also provided by DOHMH. And my first thought when I, when I read about this was, you know, this seems like it could be something that almost could be a base or foundation of what is built off of in terms of, um, you know, some kind of database. So, because it's a centralized referral system for children with serious emotional disturbances and who need intensive mental health services to remain at home or in their community. Um, and it does refer, uh, New Yorkers as old as twenty-one to home, uh, health home care management, non-Medicade care coordination and community residences. And so I just wanted to see if you could explain or dig a little deeper or dive a little deeper into that.
Sure, that, thank you for that question. I'd be happy to. So the Children's Single Point of Access is, um, operated, as you said, directly by DOHMH. And, um, what happens is, uh, uh, anyone really can refer a youth to our, I'll call it C SPOA going forward. Um, the team of, um, C SPOA staff will conduct an assessment based on the referral information and they'll also interview the family and the referring entity to sort of get a better, you know, better rounded understanding of the child's needs. And then, um, they'll do an assessment and they'll assess whether the child would meet eligibility criteria for, um, the services that you mentioned before. So specifically, they can determine whether a child, um, would benefit from, from non-Medicade care coordination, um, which is, as the title implies, a care coordination service. Um, it does very comprehensive supports for youth who are having mental health challenges. Um, another level of care they can determine eligibility for is community residences, which are, um, sites, they're sort of small therapeutic group homes, um, for youth ages five to seventeen. And, um, they are, um, a combination of, you know, structured sort of daily living activities and training and problem-solving skills. Um, and, um, you know, the determination point is, is to C SPOA for those as well. Um, or if a child, um, would be potentially eligible for health home care management, which means the child needs care coordination and also, um, is enrolled in Medicaid, so it could take advantage of that service, um, they will make a referral to the, through the health home system to that level of care. Um, so the, yeah, so it's essentially, it is a single point of access for a select number of services, right? That typically are there to support youth who have sort of higher level needs.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I think I know maybe what the answer to the question is gonna be, but, um, you know, originally when COVID first hit, a lot of the psychiatric beds were transitioned for emergency purposes. Um, and so what can we do to help expand the psychiatric beds throughout the city? Uh, what would you need, uh, you know, obviously funding space and all of that? But if you could specifically talk to or speak to, um, how we could increase the number of psych beds that are needed? Because it seems like that's, there's a shortage of that as well. Um, and my understanding is that not all of them have been completely converted back to psychiatric beds. And so if you could let us know, uh, what those numbers look like? And also, are there ones that are specifically reserved or set aside for, for youth?
So, yeah, so I, I, this is, um, as I mentioned, like, there's, uh, city and state kind of work that happens in this space and this is really a kind of a, a state issue, who are really governing or overseeing kind of that process with the beds. Um, Marnie, do you want to ask, you want to add some more pieces?
Sure, yeah. I mean, um, certainly, um, we would have to get back to you on the exact number of beds at this point in time because as, as Dr. McCray said, it's really a state, um, an issue that the state licenses and tracks rather than the city. Um, but there are, um, you know, nine acute care hospitals and one state hospital that are specifically for children and youth in New York City. Um, and so, you know, there are definitely, in response to your question, you know, beds that are, um, designated to serve, um, to serve youth in the city.
Okay. Yeah, if you could get back to us and also let us know what the challenges are. Because I know that, and, and it always is such an interesting relationship because I know a lot of the oversight compliance lies with the state. Um, but within H and H and the DOHMH system, if you could just get back to us and let us know within your sort of, um, capacity or, or realm, like what can be done about increasing the psych beds, that would be great too. Also, just a couple more questions, I'll hand it off to Chair Stevens. But, um, you know, when you were speaking in your testimony, Dr. McCray, it, one thing that I thought of when you mentioned, uh, for example, the, what was it? The School Continuum? Uh, I, it's, it's interesting because I, I immediately thought of, and I wonder if this is something that perhaps, um, yeah, the School Mental Health Continuum. I, I was curious to know if this is something that is similar to the community schools or if this program is something that would be able to be embedded or coupled with a lot of the community school models? Because I know that those have been proven to be effective, because I know that those, um, services are much more broad. But I, I wonder if this is something that would also be a good fit for working and partnering with schools, which I know involves DOE, but, um, uh, you know, which is another large agency. But it, I guess what, I guess I'm just wondering how this would look different, perhaps? Because it, it would require multi-agency efforts and, um, staffing, uh, fifty at DOE schools located in Brooklyn in the Bronx. So I guess it's sort of a, a pilot project, if you will, almost. And so I just wanted to know, um, what that would look like or how it would differ.
Sure. So I think that, um, with regard to a more detailed sort of comparison for- of the community schools model to the School Mental Health Continuum model, would want to consult with our colleague at the Department of Ed, who really run the community schools intervention. That's under DOE rather than DOHMH. I would say that the School Mental Health Continuum project is really a collaborative, what's really been fantastic about it is it's a collaborative effort across the Department of Education, the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene, and Health and Hospitals. And it's really intended to bring additional access to mental health resources to schools that aren't as well-resourced in that area. And so it takes sort of a multipronged approach to both enhancing access to those resources and ensuring that those schools are aware of what is available in the community and how to access it. So it's both stuff that would be, you know, sorry, excuse me, services that could be available either onsite in the schools or would have a dedicated link, referral and linkage system between a clinic and a school. But also to more broadly educate the school community about things like NYC Well, about things like mobile crisis teams, that there's a whole array of services that are accessible to them and how to use them.
Okay. And I guess before I hand it off, and I do have more questions, but I want my colleagues to answer, ask questions as well. But that's the perfect segue to one of my questions, which is, how has DOHMH, OCMH, how have you guys been sharing with parents in schools the services and resources that you have to help them aid children, teens, and young adults through the pandemic-related mental health struggles?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Lee and Chair Stevens, for convening today's meeting. And since this is my first hearing, I thought maybe I would just do a quick intro of myself and the office before I kind of get into answering your questions. So my name is Eva Wong and the new Director for Mayor's Office of Community Mental Health. And the past 15 years of my career have been dedicated to promoting community mental health, both as a licensed mental health counselor, working directly with diverse New York City communities, as well as as an executive leader and nonprofit board member for community-wide coalitions and many different nonprofits. And as a practitioner and an advocate, I have worked with individuals, communities, and really entire city with a heavy focus with on early childhood, on youth, and families. And this journey is what brought me here as the new Director of OCMH. And as you all know, OCMH was established in the city charter as a permanent part of our city government. And this was really building on the collective and concerted effort that made New York City the first major American city to support mental health through local tax levy funds. And the goal of OCMH is to, is really straightforward, to promote mental health for all New Yorkers. And we do this by collaborating across city agencies and with the communities to enhance equitable access to quality mental health services, supports, and treatment. Improving access to mental health services for all New York City youth is one of our priorities. So I heard what Chair Lee said earlier, what it's like to, from a nonprofit standpoint, of kind of navigating different systems and different agencies. So my office is really there to support that coordination that happens. And I look forward to just addressing the question, I think that was just asked, and the questions as well. So I understand that the question just now was really about what, how are we getting kind of information out, right?
Right, specifically, you know, to a lot of the parents, you know, about the resources that you all have available for their children.
Yes. So in a few ways, I would say, let me get you. Definitely, we mentioned NYC Well a few times, and you're very familiar with that, I believe. So that's one way we are, you know, of course, that is available to youths and families. And that's not just through calling, right? There's through texting and chat as well. And we also have different ways that we're also working with, say, with DOE. And we are working with the school staff directly, doing trainings, and making, supporting, making sure that resources are accessible and visible. I think it's very important. And making sure that all the material, for example, we put together how to talk to youth about mental health guide. And those, and many different kind of resource guides were all made available in different languages, not just the 10 common DOE language, but in 12 languages. So we work with Moya and other agencies with making sure that not just, you know, it's out there, right? And a lot of resources, of course, are available on our website. And cultural competence, care, and responsive care is very important, of course, we all know. And knowing that for communities of color, really having higher rates of mental needs and lower rates of connection to care, that's something we are constantly just kind of making sure that we are looking at to look across system, so that we're working with our partners and strategizing around. For example, I think Susan, you talked about earlier about a junior start of a home, what it is like to plan a campaign and partner together? So that, for example, DYCD have many different access points, right? Because I understand a lot of time, young people and families aren't coming to a treatment center as a first step, right? So working with our, right, social media. And so that's something that we are always kind of brainstorming on and being creative. Because when we're talking about cultural competence, we're not just talking race and ethnicity to youth, right? Youth culture is very different, ever-changing, so.
Thank you. Okay, Chair Stevens?
Oh, hello, everyone. So in 2015, the former administration announced the creation of Thrive NYC, a series of 54 initiatives that was a budget of 850 million over four years. In 2021, the initiatives were recognized as the Mayor's Office of Community and Mental Health. There were several youth-based mental health initiatives previously under the Thrive NYC banner. And I would like to verify their status. In 2017, the former administration launched the Unity Project, which made the investments in mental health and safety of LGBTQ+ youth people. How much did the Unity Project receive in 2022 and 2023? And does the administration plan to continue this initiative?
So I'm just, I'll pass this to OCMH. But I did want to say that for the Unity Project, I want to kind of talk about some of the Health Department's work in advancing that work. You know, they fund six of our Coalition of Media Prevention Programs across all five boroughs. The work is really about influencing community norms and practices in a way that reduces not only acceptances of substances, but also in a way that reduces triggers that can lead to substance use and misuse by LGBTQ+ youth as they're coping with the trauma and stress. The coalitions have reached hundreds of youth already through a number of different avenues. So I just wanted to kind of put that in there, and then I'll pass it over to Eva.
Thank you, Dr. McCray. Thank you, Chair Stevens, for your question. You started with talking about the Thrive NYC and in 2015, the series of initiatives, right, under the Thrive NYC banner. And I can speak to this, where OCMH continues to oversee several youth-based mental health initiatives that were under the Thrive NYC banner. And those included the following: the Central Crisis Support Team, that is administered by DOE; the Mental Health Hubs, that are administered by DYCD; Mental Health Services and DHS Family Shelters, administered by DHS; and newborn home visiting programs and shelters, that is administered by DOHMH. And there are other programs that are no longer overseen by OCMH, but are still operational. And those are, all these details I'm talking about are actually available on the OCMH website. And I want to name these programs that are no longer overseen by us. For example, the School Mental Health Specialist Program, that's through DOE and DOHMH; Early Childhood Mental Health Network through DOHMH; and Mental Services for High Needs School through DOE and DOHMH. And again, these are still operational. And in addition to the funded initiatives, OCMH has also produced a number of trainings and resource guides. And I kind of mentioned that earlier, that they are available directly, you know, written for youth and written for caregivers and adults. And I think there was another part of your question about the Unity Project. And while it is not an OCMH program, we know that the administration continues to support it and is embedded within the new Mayor's Office of Equity. And yes, I think that's what I would say to that.
I have a question, just because when you were just speaking, you were talking about the Mental Health Hubs. Can you talk to me a little bit about what that is? And give an overview of how's that being rolled out?
Yes, I'm going to pass it to Susan, my colleague, right here.
Thanks, Chair Stevens. The Mental Health Hubs were initiated a couple of years ago. They are an investment in partnership with OCMH at runaway and homeless youth drop-in centers. So funding was added to eight of our drop-in centers. We have one in each borough. We have eight altogether, operating 24/7, seven days a week. And providers, we have monthly connection points. To your questions about, like, how do you know all the resources that are available? We have monthly connection points for the Mental Health Hubs. They, last year, in the Mayor's Management Report, you'll see, we served about 4,317 people in FY22 with mental health services. And it's meant to be a safe place disproportionately serving LGBTQI young people. But all young people ages 14 to 24 are welcome. And many of the youth in our residences would access services at a drop-in center because maybe they want to be away from the space where they're living to get that kind of support. And they can receive everything from, you know, creative arts activities to clinical care referrals and therapy. And, yeah, this year, in first quarter, I think we have already served about 500 young people, including nearly 200 that, again, that have entered therapy.
Thank you.
Oh, no, you're good. I know, I know. Oh, sorry. Yes, I was just going to add to.
Oh, no, go, go for it.
Just give just one point about the numbers, because I think I have updated number to share here. About the launching of this program really happened a year ago, right? November 2021, with the Centralized Mental Health Hub. And so far, we've enrolled 797, so 800, young people in therapy and treatment.
So I think you answered this already around the schools. But one of Thrive's NYC's chief programs included establishing a network of 100 mental health consultants to help over 900 schools meet the needs of students in the schools without onsite mental health services. Is this program still in effect? If not, what are the plans to deploy resources in city schools without onsite mental health support?
Yes, I touch on it. I'm happy to answer that. Thank you, Chair Stevens. So the Mental Health Consultant Program was one of the original Thrive NYC initiative that has gone through several redesigns as DOE and DOHMH restructure school-based mental health programming. And yes, the program is still in effect, and it's called the School Mental Health Specialist Program. And it's no longer overseen by OCMH. And I want to see if DOHMH have anything to add to this program, the comments? Yeah, Marnie, thank you.
Sure, yes. As Eva mentioned, it has undergone some restructuring. It is now a program that is jointly under the Department of Ed and the Health Department. It has also been renamed to what was the School Mental Health Specialist Program, is now the School Mental Health Manager Program. And the program consists currently of 60 school-based mental health managers who are present in over 660 schools. And they serve as the main point of coordination of all mental health services in that school. And the, you know, functions that they offer to the school include also assessing the need for services based on data from the school. They help the schools to create work plans to implement what we consider a three-tiered model of public mental health in the schools. And they manage some partnerships with the community-based organizations, the mental health providers that serve students in those schools when those relationships are in place.
Thank you. I know we talked about the Unity Project a little before, but I just had a question around. Could you please explain the mental health, health support services those young people provide for the Unity Project? Because I know a component of that is peer mentorship. So could you talk a little bit about the runaway youth and homeless youth in crisis?
Yes, I appreciate that question. I think I'm going to speak about a couple of initiatives. And I can't necessarily pinpoint the one you're referring to. But from the Unity Project investment from earlier this year in the spring, funded a financial literacy investment in the drop-in centers, which is a partnership with OCMH and also with Department of Consumer and Worker Protection. That's about $1.2 million to serve young people who are in accessing runaway and homeless youth drop-in centers, many of them looking for permanent housing, getting support for vouchers or supportive housing or other options, maybe to move out of shelter or out of unstable living conditions. That isn't necessarily a mental health-focused project, although gaining financial security obviously is going to support their social-emotional stability. Separately, there's a Peer Navigator Project that we're launching this year. And that is also focused on housing readiness for young people, supporting the young people through, like, with, you know, peer relationships through the process of finding long-term housing. Housing navigators are really helping them through paperwork, the bureaucracy of, like, the job that it takes to secure a housing resource in New York City. And the peer navigators are supporting those housing navigators and the young people, hey, what is it like to go look at an apartment? Like, I don't want to go by myself. Some, a peer navigator can come in and be like, I've been through this before. We're just, we're going to go, we're going to check out this site, here's how you do it. And they give them that social-emotional support through somebody with lived experience. So there's the financial literacy, peer navigators, who support the work of housing navigators.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, the peer navigator piece. And so what mental training or certification does those peer navigators get? And I guess since it's not a mental health program, it's more around helping them get through the housing process and kind of being a mentor. Can you talk about, like, what programs or certifications that they might get through that?
Talk about what?
What certifications or support the peer navigators get to actually be prepared to do that work?
That's a good point. There's, there are training resources being provided to peer navigators. It's a new project. That training is underway with OCMH. I think, I believe we also are securing support from Coalition for Homeless Youth. And it includes, like, understanding the housing process. Their main expertise is lived experience, so that's really what we're drawing on. But we also tap into the resources of OCMH has, you know, a mental health, like, 101. They have one for staff. And we're tapping into those trainings that are available online.
So just thinking about, and I know it's a very new program, but how long do you think peer navigators will be staying with their mentee when they're in the program?
The goal is for longer-term support, like, through their accessing housing, through some of the challenges that people run into once they would secure housing. So that funding is secure through the end of the fiscal year. We anticipate that relationship stays through at least June of next year.
Thank you. The Office of Community and Mental Health Partners with DYCD, On the Pathways to Wellbeing, an initiative which promotes the positive mental health of children and adolescents. The Office of the Community and Mental Health website states that 450 staff across cornerstone community centers and beacon after-school sites were trained to promote positive mental health through reading and writing. What mental health training do staff receive?
I'm just going to start and think of her to question, and then going to pass it to Susan as well. OCMH is really proud to be partnering, and you've heard many partnerships already with DYCD. And we supported the startup of this program initiative. And we are overseeing, or the startup partnership itself ended in FY22. And Susan would give status on how the programs are going right now.
Yeah, Pathways to Wellbeing was a really exciting project, 10 cornerstone programs. About 450 staff across cornerstones were trained. There was a 101 on definitions, getting familiar with common terms. There was a 102, most common types of mental illness, signs and symptoms, causes. 103 went more into healthy relationships, PTSD. And then there was youth crisis management and vicarious trauma for staff to understand how they're impacted by the trauma of the people they work with and making sure their self-care. You both spoke about staff challenges, were very mindful of the need to support staff. And that, yeah, so that's the training that we were offered to the cornerstone staff for Pathways to Wellbeing.
I already know the answers, but I'll ask it anyway. Are there social workers connected to your after-school programs and programs that DYCD offers?
I mean, I think there's a yes and no to that. Many, many of our programs, like, many of our programs have MSW and clinical staff as part of their programs. It's not a requirement in most of DYCD's. It's not a requirement in most of DYCD's um after-school and community centers. Although, um, again, many, many of our programs do have um social work, social work staff. And again, that's an area where it's been really challenging to hire and hold on to staff. Um, but we are looking at ways we can support those pipelines and and um keep um the expertise in in our programs.
So, you know, I think for me, one of the big challenges that I often see and I feel and I don't, and I know that everyone's working very closely together. But I feel like a lot of times, there's a lot of emphasis on schools and like DHS and all these other places. And the community-based organizations that work through DYCD are consistently doing the work because that's what they do regardless. But there's no real through-line and connection um as far as like support, right? Like, cause even in the testimony today, um, it stated that DOE and ACS and DHS have systems in place for referrals, but DYCD was not mentioned when a lot of times the work is being done on the ground with the CBOs. Can you guys kind of like talk a little bit about what that looks like? Because I I do often feel like even with like DOE and me being in a provider for so long, I remember a lot of times the ball used to be passed to the provider. And we would be le- left holding the bag of like, okay, well, we have to figure it out. But a lot of investments is made on the DOE side, but they still pass it off to us. So could we talk a little bit about what that looks like in that inconsistency?
I don't mind um kicking that off and I'll invite my colleagues to to weigh in. I certainly appreciate the question. And I think we, you know, we have a tremendous investment. And this administration has expanded, as Dr. McCray mentioned, SYP, blowing up, you know, a hundred thousand young people. We did summer rising cert-, you know, also bigger, the biggest summer enrichment program ever. So the investments continue to grow in youth services overall, and that is the tier-one intervention. What do young people need to build the resilience to be able to manage the grief and crisis? They're gonna have, you know this, those social emotional supports. I've got to have positive peer relationships, um caring adults looking out for me. So lot of, a lot of the staff in our programs offering enrichment, enrichment services are gonna be the ones to identify problems. I think that we are doing a better job than ever before, making the connections, some of the programs that have been described today, that so that we can make strong referrals. And I'll just add like, you know, Commissioner Howard has charged us um thinking forward to make sure that every program has a documented resource, that they, they have evidence that they know where to go to make referrals, that we're connecting them to these services. So that there isn't a staff person in the program who isn't sure what to do when a young person is really struggling beyond, you know, having a bad day and needs and needs an intervention. So um, we look forward to continuing to strengthen, strengthen those connections.
Um, I just wanted to add to what Susan's saying. And I'm hearing um Chair Stevens, you're saying that really the big burden on the CBO side and really, right? Once there are resources in city agencies and then the providers themselves, how are they gonna, right? There's so much on their shoulders and of course, someone from also from the community side. Uh, I, I have experience, I don't understand that. So one thing I wanted to add is OCMH, we, one of our signature initiative is the Academy for Community Behavioral Health. And it is um a partnership and in itself is actually, I don't know if it's institute, but but a a program that actually provides a lot of free training to CBOs and how we um are able to design these, we work with Cooney and they have a lot of expertise for um and people who are developing this with cultural competence and understanding of what the um community, different community, diverse community needs. And so the topics that are actually um kind of picked up and designed into courses, whether it is kind of one-off, couple-hour training for CBO staff or is maybe like a course that is multiple weeks. All those topics came from partners and came from the community. So that's one resource that we are really putting a lot into and making sure that um we are sending directly to partners as well through our partnership with the city agencies. We have connection to about two hundred CBOs. And we, we, we understand that, right? A lot of time is just um, right, cost and time, right? When do people have time to take these courses? But money as well, when, when they get away from their work. So there are different kind of digestible ways, right, longer and shorter courses. But building that capacity where the work is um is something that we are looking at always, so.
No, absolutely. Um, and I I agree. Um, like I said, for me, it's just understanding that that piece that I I feel like the providers are often left out and even sometimes DYCD, right? Like, I I remember being, reaching, having issues and reaching out to DYCD and them trying hard and and hitting roadblocks and um being frustrated because understanding that DOE had access to these things, but they, like I said, would pass it off to the providers. Um, and then, you know, sometimes some of the connections that I feel that could be made aren't, sometimes are are just a little bit loose. Um, but I guess my next question is, and I, this is another one I know the answer to, is is so- is social emotional learning part of the work scope for all program providers?
I think that's for me, DYCD-funded programs.
Yes.
Absolutely. I think social emotional learning is fundamental to any program that DYCD is funding. You know, the foundation of youth development is their social emotional development, their social emotional skills. Um, again, relationship building, understanding themselves, understanding themselves in a social construct, construct, including like many of the barriers that they may face in the social construct, institutional racism and discrimination issues. But understanding, you know, where they can excel, where their skills and interests are. That is absolutely fundamental to, I think, all of DYCD-funded programs.
So yeah, I know it's like fundamental, but is it something that's a requirement?
Um, yeah, I would say it's absolutely part of every service that we're being delivered. And and that the, and that the requirements of the actions of service itself um include development of a young person's social emotional skills.
Um, cause I, cause I think that like it is true that it is part of the culture that is being cultivated. But um, just really thinking about um, how do we kind of make it more intentional?
Yeah, I I do want to pick up that, you know, we're in a period where we're looking at, you know, re-procuring many of our services. And I think that the direction we're definitely going is more institutionalized connections with um mental health supports and behavioral supports and um institutionalized um connections to social emotional curriculum, to the point you're making, something a little, something more um concretized.
Yeah. Um, and so can you talk about how? And I know, like I said, it's it's part of DYCD's overall goals and things. But is there, is there a way to measure or evaluate the success of um reaching students in need of mental health services and support?
I think there is. I mean, I think we have some models with that. Like, you're talking about generally social emotional across DYCD programs. We go a little further with runaway and homeless to like tier-two, tier-three interventions. And we do have some mechanisms to track um the numbers of young people who need more um clinical care, more advanced services and the number of people who are supported, including like in MMR and other um databases. I think there is a way to tap into um referrals, numbers of referrals, and sort of try to quantify the, the, those supports.
Yeah, cause I know like, cause like through, through some of the digging that we've been doing around the research, like I know like that's, it has been carved out more with the homeless runaway youth. But I'm thinking about like through, the through-line through the programs. Is that something that, um, especially when you talk about like the reimagining and a lot of stuff that DYCD is looking at to evaluate? Is this something that we're looking like, looking at? Cause I think it is important to make sure that that is an active component of what we're looking at as an indication for success.
I appreciate that.
Um, so this was something else that I did not know about. And I was just like, hmm, I ran cornerstones for a number of years and I did not hear of this. It is the um, um DYCD and O- OCMH have partnered with Random House to set up mental health libraries in NYCD, NYNITIA cornerstone community centers across the city. Um, I have never heard of this, so I I was very surprised. And so, questions? Um, and so what constitute a mental health library?
Um, the mental health libraries were a project with Random House. Um, Random House provided more than six hundred books. We were in ten cornerstone programs. In the Bronx, we were at Murphy and Cedric.
I know, I called them.
Okay. Um, so ten um cornerstone, um ten developments. They had, um, they were creating spaces where young people could go for some quiet reading time or some directed leaning, reading. They had a set of standardized books that were gonna be in each library. Um, and they set up some visuals and the project um included training staff and creating these spaces. And while um we're not necessarily um tracking or funding that project going forward, we've created spaces that we hope that the cornerstones will um continue and that our DYCD staff who participated in that can bring to the other programs that they support.
So this program, it was just like a one-time, um?
I would say it was an investment. We invested in the library, in these, in these locations. You know, we don't take the books back. They're
That would be terrible. Give me those books, like. Could you imagine?
No. And we look forward to more special projects like that to keep thinking about innovative ways we can bring understanding of behavioral health to to young people.
Yeah, um, so and and just thinking about, even though it was a runoff, could you talk a little bit about the, was it successful? Is this something that, you know, we should be continuing to invest in? Like, could you give us a little bit more um detail?
Yeah, I I I connected a little bit with um, with my colleagues, Jess Vitas Hernandez. And she was describing and shared some photographs of some of the activities that went on. Some of the successful um uh components of the library was like a mood reader, where you could walk up as a young person, kind of like point your fingers in the areas about how you were feeling and engage in dialogue with the staff. Um, another thing that she um described was, um, what was the other, some of the other? Oh, at Batances, they had um an art project on the wall that was designed around de-stigmatizing mental health issues. And I think all of those activities, initiatives and conversations are like building, strengthening the infrastructure of the youth development programs of the CBO themselves, of the staff, um, to better be equipped, to have a conversation with the young people, to talk about um how the young person feeling and and see if there's a, if there's a next step.
Yeah, no, great. I mean, it it sounds like, so when I ran program, I created like um social emotional cor- corners where young people would be able to go decompress. We had aromatherapy, there was books and all the things. So it sounds very similar. And it was successful because it gave young people autonomy and and were able to say, I am feeling this way, so I need a moment to decompress and taking their moment and understanding that, so.
I love it. We've moved beyond the wooden chair at the front of the classroom.
You know.
Turned around backwards. No, 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 no.
No, it's like
We have so many amazing approaches.
Yeah, and also, I remember for me, I was like, you need to be able to identify the feelings to go over there. So it can't just like, I just want to go over there, I'm having, so it's like, I, it's not, I just feel sad, like, I am not feeling okay. Or I am joyful, like really helping them use language. So um definitely think that those things are important. It seems like very small, but it does make a huge difference. Um, I just have a couple more questions and then I know um Chair has some more questions. I actually have some more questions too, so. Um, I'm not sure if our colleague has any questions yet, but, okay. Um, how do, how does mental health services and programming differ in drop-in center, crisis shelters and transitions into independent living facilities? Are young people required to receive mental health counseling at any of those facilities?
In the runaway and homeless youth services programs, they're not required to receive mental health counseling, but they are required to have regular meetings with their staff to talk about life goals, develop an individualized service plan. It could be around getting a job. It's, it's usually includes getting housing or family reunification. And it would um certainly include their physical and mental health goals as well. So um nobody's required to participate in a group or or an enrichment activity, but they, um, we want to make sure that those um programs are offered, you know, whether or not you've been referred to clinical care. Um, so it's not required, but what is required is that you're gonna have regular meetings with the staff who, who um are with you in the, in the residence, who can talk about issues and identify maybe if there is a I, if, if it is a good idea for you to
So it's required. It's just not required in a formal, formal sense.
Well, yeah, but the staff that you're meeting with, it's not necessarily around like um mental health counseling. I guess that's a different.
Yeah.
Life goals.
Yeah, but those, that's part of mental health, so. Um, and I, and I, and I say that and identify that because I think it's important for people to understand that it's not always sitting down with a therapist or licensed social worker. Um, and the folks who are doing those meetings are doing sometimes intense work, right? Like, they are sitting there, they're, they're hearing their life stories, they're helping them create goals and those things, those things are important. So I don't, I think for me, it's important for us to ensure that we are recognizing that that is, if not more important sometimes, for them to just have a person of connection than like actually saying, oh, I sat with a therapist or I had fifty referrals. Um, because a lot of times those staff members are doing the intense work even before they get to to actually get to the courage to go to real actual mental health services. So they are required, but I just think it looks different. So I just wanted to make sure I acknowledge that, cause they're doing their work. Um, and it's important. Um, how long does a drop-in center typically track a young person who sought mental health services, um, support services?
That's a good question. Um, drop-in centers aren't, you know, time-limited. We have young people who've been coming to drop-in centers for years. Um, so I don't know that we have sort of a timeframe around their, their access to, to supports. Um, we can talk about that a little bit more and I can see if I can get you the detail that you're looking for.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Definitely circle back on that. Um, I am going to kick it back to Chair Lee and she can kick it back to me. I have a couple more questions.
And um, okay, thank you. So um, just a few more quick questions. Um, so actually, in the, in the testimony you gave, Dr. McCray, I, I noticed you talked about, um, okay. Um, that the city and health department has been working directly with the contracted behavioral health service providers um in a few key ways. And one of the points that you had mentioned was um that you helped create a platform to address the staffing needs many providers were experiencing at the time. So I wanted to know where we can find this or, or what, you know, wh- where it can be found or what sort of lessons learned or best practices or advice or recommendations came out of that?
Right, so the, the platform was really um a temporary platform to help providers recruit um additional staff when they were really um experiencing extreme shortages and in the height, during the height of the pandemic. Um, and so it's not, it's no longer operational, but it was really intended to help uh almost be a matchmaking, right? Between um staff who are available to take on some temporary positions within the provider agencies um and providers who are looking for, you know, additional supports. But it was, it was a short, it was a time-limited initiative.
Um, how long was that and and do you know anything in terms of the success? And how, what the feedback was and is that something, if it was successful, is that something that maybe would be continued?
I think we'd have to get back to you with some of the details, yeah.
Okay. Cause that, I mean, just off the top of my head, because that seems like something that would make sense um, given that there still are a lot of the work short, you know, the workforce shortages. And so I just wanted, that, that piqued my curiosity when I saw that. I was like, wait a second, I need to ask more about this. Um, and then in terms of the, um, just out of curiosity, the, the trained one hundred and twenty Public Health Corps members um, on childhood grief, where uh, because it says these team members were deployed in community-based organizations in the most affected neighborhoods. And so can you speak a little bit more to that? Is that trained one hundred and twenty Public Health Corps members, meaning the city, and you all trained them and then sent them to these different CBOs to help support, like provide the supportive services for their members?
Um, so what I can um offer, I'll, I'll frame it up and then maybe pass it to Dr. McCray. So um, the Public Health Corps, um, you know, they are already working in communities that um are disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. Um, and um essentially, they are trained in a variety of uh health and, you know, um behavioral health-related topics that are of importance to the communities in which they are working. So this was um through the Loss and Bereavement Program that we fund. One of the services that the program offers is training, right? To build the capacity of, of others, right, to recognize when a child or family needs um some bereavement supports. So um it was a training for those um Public Health Corps workers um who are then engaging at the community level, right? To become more aware of, of, of loss, right, and bereavement and um how to support youth and families. Um, I don't know, Dr. McCray, if there's anything else you wanted to add to the specifics of um the communities that they're serving. Yeah, I think if you want more specifics about exactly where, like the distribution of where those um staff are located, we'd be happy to speak, you know, with our colleagues at the department and get back to you about that.
Yeah, any, any data on that? Cause I'm, I'm always curious to see how successful, because I think one of the things that I heard um through Thrive is that for the ones that did receive um through Thrive is that for the ones that did receive the mental health corps um members, like social workers that were trained by the city and then deployed into the nonprofit organizations. Um, you know, we've heard mixed feedback on it, but for the groups that had good experiences, it worked really well, right? So for the ones that had a positive experience, it was, it was very, it was, you know, more on the extreme side of the positive end. And so I just, I, I feel like, you know, given again the workforce shortage, can we also revisit or think through some of those creative opportunities to provide that workforce into the C B O side? Um, and then the, also, um, it says the Adams administration, um, it talks about the what is it? Uh, the framework that you guys are talking about that will be released in early twenty twenty-three. Um, you know, this sounds actually really great because it's centered on strengthening a system of care in New York City for children and youth with behavioral health needs and their families and caregivers, which sounds awesome, and so um, you know, prevention, I'm a huge, you know, fan of preventative services because um it's, it's the early detection piece is very important, and so just wanted to know, just out of curiosity, who are you talking to in terms of creating uh the framework? And, you know, are you, is it involving an array of community partners along with C B Os as well as individual practitioners and the city agencies? Like, how, who, who's involved in that, that uh frameworking?
So I'll start that out. I mean, I think one of the things we recognize in kind of all the mental health work that we do is that really it takes multiple stakeholders to kind of really work together, to fill gaps. Uh, you know, every agency, every uh, community-based organization has kind of a role and a part in, in the work. Um, so yeah, so Deputy Mayor for Health and Human Services, Deputy Mayor Anne Wimzeisem. She's brought together these kind of city agencies, community-based organizations, national organizations, uh youth, parent, caregivers, uh hospitals, insurance companies to develop kind of that core component of, of this, of the work. Um, so there's a recognition kind of in that space, like we want to get multiple of, of feedback from community in all different levels uh to really build like a, a really a, a comprehensive and thoughtful plan. Uh, it's, it's going to be out in the, the beginning of two thousand twenty-three. Um, Marty's been kind of, you know, really in that space, and so maybe she can speak some, some more specifics, but kind of overall, that is, you know, we recognize that we really need kind of a coalition of individuals to really, or, or agencies, not individuals, but agencies and, and partners um to get this work done.
I, I think you covered it, yeah.
Just wanted to add to what Dr. McCray said. Um, I think like-minded, right, thinking about what prevention, what it looks like. So um Susan and myself, actually, we kind of self-selected to be in those conversations. We're always also part of, part of the task force. So the universal, right, tier and understanding what really uh support access and what is available, um, you know, responsive care in that level that is really touching, right, children and youth, um whether they are experiencing any symptoms or not, right, really just being there in all different ways come strengthening, right, the actually building and promoting mental wellbeing. Um, we just happen to be there, both of us, in that, in that um subgroup of the task force.
That's good to know.
I also, I was trying to add, like, uh also that, you know, we are taking uh kind of a three-tiered model. So uh Eva mentioned kind of that tier one, kind of universal, and you know, obviously tier two are for people who are kind of at risk and kind of three, tier three are kind of a little more intensive services. So we're looking at a variety of strategies to really address kind of people at all levels, uh from universal to those people who really uh, you know, need targeted interventions.
Okay, thank you. And for Deputy Commissioner, the, the inter-agency task force that you mentioned earlier, which I think, I believe you're all part of, but um, I, just out of curiosity, because I know sometimes the inter-agency task forces are more meant to be temporary, but is this sort of an ongoing, um, you know, uh task force? And how often do you guys meet, if you still meet, just out of curiosity?
Yes, I'm gonna get tasked to me because uh I think we, we call it something different, but um we, I think Susan was referring to the mental council, which is actually charter mandated responsibility of O C M H that we have to convene at least twice a year, mental council uh meetings. So last, I guess November first, it was last week, we brought together um forty-three city agencies, commissioner level or delegates to talk about things that matter to New York City mental health care system. And specifically, we were um spotlighting a few cross-system initiatives that were, that would be kind of newer or exciting and creative and, and kind of addressing gaps. And I know we talk about workforce here a lot, specifically mental workforce, that's also another topic that we dedicated a meeting to. Yeah, so that's not um short-term. There are follow-up work that we'll do to it with that, and it's meant to be ongoing and is a really great platform and is for city agency, whether they're delivering direct mental service or they have contracted providers for, and many other systems, right, within, we, we have brought them all to the table so that we can um understand what else they're seeing, because a lot of other agencies, whether, right, they're touching on the social determinative health, so. Yeah, we, so we were intentional on bringing in those partners across the city.
Okay, um, and just uh finally, just going back to the mobile crisis teams. Um, I, so it's like almost a, it's a sort of a multi-question. Um, do the mobile crisis teams, do they also go to schools and do they serve children in the New York City school system? Or is it mostly just uh limited to homes or, or that nature?
Oh, thank you for that question. The children's mobile crisis teams absolutely will serve children in school settings and, and frequently do. Um, they're really available to respond wherever the child um is. And that can be in a home and any, any other community setting. It could be a school. Really, there's not real limit um to where they can respond.
Okay, and do you have data on the deployment of mobile crisis teams during the pandemic and specifically in response to crisis involving a child, that a lesson or young person?
Um, yes, so um what I can offer is um, well, okay. During the pandemic, I, I mean, I can break it down, you know, by fiscal year for you, because I know that, you know, obviously it crossed, um, you know, it's crossed too many years, unfortunately. Um, so the um, the data show that for one moment. For F Y um twenty, there, and this is a reference to um referrals made to the children's mobile crisis teams for um youth from birth to twenty-four, essentially, for that age group. So for F Y twenty, um, there were thirteen hundred. For F Y twenty-one, it was one thousand eight hundred and sixty-four. And for F Y twenty-two, you'll notice it, it, an increase, a notable increase, it's three thousand seven hundred and forty-two.
Wow, that's a huge increase between F Y twenty-one and F Y twenty-two.
It is. Um, there were also a few variables, a few circumstances which may have contributed to that. So um, there was um a shifting of youth who uh previously the, the, there's also adult-serving mobile crisis teams, right? And those teams were previously serving um older youth, eighteen through twenty. And um we shifted over to having the children's mobile crisis teams respond to that age group because we thought they'd be able to provide a more developmentally appropriate response, and so that is a potentially contributing factor. Um, we also increased the capacity of the children's mobile crisis teams um in April of two thousand twenty, although like many changes, it took a while for that sort of to be realized, right, for the full capacity to be, you know, um, to be present and available. Um, so the expansion, you know, of total capacity and the age expansion of who might be eligible for or who was eligible for the children's mobile crisis teams, um, you know, could be additional contributing factors to that. So I just wanted to offer that context as well.
Thank you. And, and how has the passing of the baton been for the mobile to something a bit more long-term, if it's, if that's needed?
Yes, that's a really good question. So we do track, um, the, that's a very important thing that we track um in terms of this uh service, is how successfully the children's mobile crisis teams are able to connect a young person to care after they've stabilized, you know, the, the crisis. And um we um find that an average for F Y twenty-two, uh, there was a sixty-two, approximately sixty-two percent of the youth who were served by the crisis teams were linked to care. Um, there are many factors that um go into whether a youth is successfully linked or not. Um, it can be that they, they decline, they may have had a care provider, like, you know, um occasionally, they may end up actually needing a higher level of care, so they may end up needing, you know, hospitalization, even though the intent of the, the service is to try to avert that whenever possible. Um, so there's, there's a range of reasons which we'd be happy to provide about, you know, when the connection isn't successful, but um it has been uh, you know, sixty-two percent for F Y twenty-two, and, and that's a pretty typical um percentage across years.
Okay, thank you. And yes, if you could um let us know perhaps maybe some of the reasons why they, there is not a successful. And, and like you said, I do realize and recognize that it could be because they refuse the services as well, so if you could let us know, that'd be great. Um, and I'm going to pass it off to you.
Well, welcome back. So I just have a few more questions, um, because lovely Chair Lee um asked some of the questions I was going to ask. Um, but according to O C M, um, O C H M, O C M H, mental health data dashboard among youth with mental health needs, males are less likely to connect with mental health across all races and ethnicities. Um, what is O C M H doing to fill those voids and reach boys and young men in needs of services?
Thank you, Chair Stevens, on that question. There's a little bit echoey thing happening as you were, I wonder if you could just repeat.
Oh, of course. Is this still happening?
It's better, I think.
So the question was, according to O M, O C M H mental health dashboard, among youth with mental health needs, males are less likely to connect to mental health care across all races and ethnicities. What is O C H, O C M H doing to fill those voids and reach boys and young men needs of services?
Yes, I think that's um, that's something that is um, one of those things that keep me up at night, right, understanding where a lot of times folks, um, we understand what barriers are and at the same time what we've made available. Is it really something that um can be, I think, maybe male color, for example, right, kind of certain age group? Um, are folks feeling that they can really trust it, right, through the service provider? Are they even um reflective of their racial affinity and so on? So at the moment, um, what my, my team and I are definitely thinking about is looking at available resources and how they are um sort of advertised or, or kind of put out there and thinking about strategic planning, so that when you think about the most vulnerable or hard-to-reach population, we don't just assume having the right language or a couple other words there, like, that's not enough, right? Like, what are the different medium? And so I don't have um, um a plan out yet, but that's very much one of the priorities that my office has to, to break it down.
And so we've been thinking about that. A lot of mental health providers are typically female. What are you doing to like help build up that capacity and things like that? Is that something that's been taken into consideration as well?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I agree. That is, um, when you look at providers, right, kind of the breakdown and working with folks, for example, that already have expertise or they already have C B Os, um, they target, say, father, right, young father or different kind of group, partnering with those experts and maybe cultural brokers in the community is one of the strategies, and almost like we can't do it without, right? Um, so from, from my office standpoint is to talk with those who are working with different populations and learning from them and really bringing resources to them. They have a lot that they can teach us, right? So I think this is um absolutely sort of what you're saying is something that we are not gonna, you know, just kind of wait. Like, we have to be proactive to break down those barriers.
Yeah, and I also think it's about being creative, right? And so even thinking about, right, when, when I identified how it, like, you know, the providers are doing a lot of this work, when they're doing like initial conversations and helping them with goals, you know, how are you working with C M S sites to do that, right? How are we looking at fields that have, you know, connections with young people who need the work? How are you connecting with them? Because I think that that's important. I mean, one of the things I talk about all the time, when you look at gun violence in the city, a lot of those young people are grieving. Like, it's grief, and their grief is showing up as retaliation, and there's nowhere or space for them to learn how to grieve or understand or connect to those feelings. And so I think it's important for us to be thinking about how are we being creative and not thinking like, okay, well, it has to look this way. And thinking about how are we using and connecting all the services that the city prov- provides and thinking about, you know, we have put a lot of resources into C M S sites, so then how are you working and partnering with them? That's a field that actually is led by a lot of men of color and, and people who are on the ground, and, you know, I don't necessarily think you have to have a degree in order to help and, and push this work. And so I think that it's, it's imperative upon us to be creative and pushing a better narrative and using all points of access to get access to the people who need the services.
Yes, I, I didn't take the mic earlier, I think when you were talking to Susan, and when you said we need to recognize, it's not mandatory, but every conversation is normalizing and showing in practice sometime on the provider's side that it is okay to talk about in these different ways, right, so that we're not going to be hesitant and just thinking we need to use certain terms because in a young person's life, right, and, right, they're talking about life, how do we talk about like with them? And tapping into um, yeah, anybody who is in conversation and social media, I think a lot of ways is being um very creative um in how we not, like, I think that the de-stigmatizing, but normalizing social emotional needs as, as daily conversation. So I really appreciate you putting kind of underscoring that.
Absolutely, and I think, and that's why I, I think for me, it's like leaning and saying like, how are we bringing D Y C D into these conversations? Because those providers are already doing the work, right? Like, I ran program for twenty years and people did not understand how I was able to do the things that I did, and it was because I gave access and I made young people feel safe, and so they would want to come talk to me. And so, and I'm nosy by nature, so I'm gonna dig into, into their business, and that's just who I am, my personality, but I also know that those programs save lives, right? And so how are we making sure that we're using those programs in a way to make it the first access and to reach these young men, right? Like, almost all of these programs had basketball tournaments this summer. Why are we not out there doing outreach for mental health services? Like, we have to meet young people where they're at, and we do a terrible job at that, like a terrible job, and so we have to get better. And to be honest, I know a lot, like I said before, a lot of focus is usually on D O E, but you really need to be shifting that focus to D Y C D, because they're already doing the work and they already have the connections. And that's where it's at, because understanding that D O E, a lot of times, it seems like as an institution. So people already have a barrier going into there, because it's like, it's an institution, those are principles, and, and they're scared and nervous. But that's not the case when you go to these providers that are doing the work and they're comfortable. So we have to, I think, for me, it's like, how do we as a city get out of this mindset of, of it has to be a certain way? Um, so, I know I'm preaching to the choir.
Absolutely, yes, and, and that's why, um, thank you, thank you. Um, it's always, right, we always have to, I think, when we kind of move away from the work, we cannot forget, right, the all-access point. So um one of the um partners that we brought in with the mental council I mentioned earlier is, is Parks and Rec, right? Where, where is basketball at? Where are other folks that young people are not going into maybe after-school program, not going to do this, but they are playing basketball, they are accessing other facilities, right, that is not traditionally where we think most services, but they are, have a recreation.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I see it, I know it, and I know it works, which is why I, I'm pushing it in the way that I am, because I think that it's important um to make sure that we are continuously making sure that we're connecting to the folks who need it, because often what happens is we are connecting with people who would already get the services anyway. Um, so, you know, it's just, it's really important to me, because it, it's all connected in the fact that it will save lives, like, and so for me, that's that's where the focus should be as well. Um, so my next question is, the O, O C M H mental health dashboard also points out that in neighborhoods with the lowest connection to mental health services includes the Northeast Bronx, um Borough Park and Kingsbridge. Only around twenty percent of those mental health needs receive treatment with, with is the O C M H doing doing to outreach in those communities to fill the gaps in services for those who are in need.
Thank you so much. And yes, uh, thank you for really looking really closely, right, and really having that um for, for our office, the accountability and the transparency is very valuable. So having that out there is just receiving these questions from you, I appreciate that. Uh, being strategic, I think, I feel like I'm, I'm kind of repeating myself, but I think as we're saying that we are being strategic, we're partnering what are the folks who are doing already, you know, supporting community members on the ground, and adding to that is what you. And adding to that is what you said, folks on the ground are probably exhausted and they are, right? So how are we gonna make sure that, um, for example, what I mentioned with Academy, there is training going out and also coming back where we're understanding the needs. Another thing from kind of my perspective is that a lot of times when we talk to, um, community members and with CBOs, we we do a lot of the listening, we say, right, that's the starting point. And then how are we keeping ourselves comfortable to after we had heard and they have said and they're tired of saying that there is a circle back, right? So, um, those data are there, um, so that we can continue. And, um, since I am newer, that's one of the, you know, bubbles I'm thinking about my strategic planning. Where I myself want to, right, make myself available and my team as well to, um, kind of brainstorm. And I also aware that a lot of, um, kind of CBOs and and specialty kind of population, folks who are supporting them already have tried different ways of doing work, right? So we learn from the best practice and support those. So it's not just, um, you know, maybe this borough, there's this population and how we getting information to another group that might need that information, right? So doing that from our, um, where we are sitting, I think is one of the ways that we can support.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Um, and and I and I think the the question about the neighborhoods who are lacking, I think is important. And then thinking about how do we flood those, oh, areas to make sure that they are getting it. And once again, I just wanna echo that I think that we need to meet people where they're at. Um, and thinking about how are we preparing for the summer and the how are we preparing right now? And, um, what does that look like, you know? Like, for me, we should be having services available in all of these programs, right? When I walk in every community center, when I walk in every, you know, um, after school program, those things should have access. And I think that is important. And like I said, I know that the providers are doing the work because that's what they do. But I think also like helping them understand that they're actually doing the work, right? And so they can be intentional about it. Because a lot of times they don't even know that they're actually being, um, the first step or they're doing a referral or actually doing a session and those type of things. But we are not being intentional about it. So I think that that's gonna be really important. Just a few more questions. What is currently working well within the system of mental health services provision for NYC youths? What are some things that are being done well? Do you guys think are being done well? I mean, maybe I don't think anything's being done well, you know, I don't know.
I'll start out. I'm sure folks have a lot to say across the table. I think really there is unprecedented collaboration across, uh, providers, uh, and stakeholders. Uh, I think one of the recent, um, you know, I mean, I guess not recent anymore, but, you know, being able to get our mobile crisis, um, response down to two hours, I think is a was is a huge, um, uh, benefit and a greatness of kind of, uh, over the last few years, we've been able to kind of pull that together. But I would I would kind of name those two as like really high on my list as I as I think about it. But I think that the collaboration, um, and kind of really trying to figure out how to break down silos, uh, and create, uh, you know, easier pathways to services. It's not done, we're not there yet, but I think there is momentum in the direction and there is widespread kind of efforts to, um, to make that happen.
Yeah, thank you for that acknowledgement of like having an effort to be collaborative because that has not always been the case. So I think that even acknowledging that that was an issue and that, you know, we're on path to try to correct that is, you know, for me, super important and and really exciting to hear. Um, because I think that that was one of the main issues why some of the services weren't being provided. So thank you for that.
And I add one more thing. I know that, you know, you know, I'm really, I'm really, you've mentioned several times, like, treatment or kind of caring for for mental health is not just about treatment. And I think there is kind of wider kind of recognition of that as well, is that there are social determinants of health. We have to meet people's need, like, basic needs. And those are just as important, if not more, than, you know, going to see a therapist, um, and meeting people where they are. So.
I say that all the time, um, just in the sense of like, you know, like, and and looking at a district like mine where, you know, if you don't have a place, if you don't have a home, or if you're, you don't have food, or if you just got laid off, those things take precedent over me going to therapy, right? And so what happens is when you look in these communities, there's a lack of basic essentials for life, which is why these other things get ignored. Because it's like, I need to figure out how I'm gonna live for tomorrow before I can think about these other things. So that's really important.
Absolutely agree.
Sure, I think, uh, I can't underscore enough the collaboration that we have, um, with multiple other child serving agencies. It's it's really is, um, it's been fantastic to be part of. Um, I would add also, in addition to the crisis service expansion, we've really invested over the years in peer supports, um, both for fam- family to family and youth to youth. And I think that's a really critical, um, part of our service system. And I'm really, um, I I think it has tremendous impact. And I'm, you know, I'm just happy we've been able to make the investment over the years in that and and will continue to. I'd I'd say one other area, um, is early childhood mental health. Because this was something that, um, was insufficiently available, right? In in the system many years ago and we have over time been able to really, um, grow that portfolio. To normalize it and also to not only provide direct care to, um, young, you know, very young children and their families, but also through consultation models, help support other child serving settings, right? To understand how to promote, um, the well-being of children in those settings and how to recognize, right? When maybe they do need something additional above and beyond what can be offered in that setting. Um, and really building the capacity of other child serving settings to do that work as well. So I I would I would highlight those two other areas.
I think I'll add to, um, what has been said. Couple of things I think for as unique as a mayor's office is definitely what Dr. McCray said, what does it mean to break down silos, right? And one of the approach and one of the really, I think, advantage of being a mayor's office is being able to collaborate and facilitate that inter-agency collaboration and making sure, because folks don't always have the capacity to do that work, right? So that's one of the priority for OCMH. And we mentioned a few things, for example, the hubs and drop-in centers and so on. And I want to add to a couple other, um, things that we have been supporting. For example, with DOE, we've implemented as youth are, we're kind of transitioning out, we're still in a pandemic. But during this time, right, um, we implemented crisis response in schools and providing training and resources to school staff. So speaking to that is, uh, OCMH looks at what are the updated knowledge that needs to, cause a lot of times our professionals, um, and I think peers as well, right? Folks who don't have to have the license, but they are doing the work of supporting young people. They, um, have come out of whatever training they have and we are then learning, okay, there is new ways, these are best practice and making those things available and easy to access. So there's also kind of the system-wide issues that and convene folks to do that. So, um, our office can can also, you know, be in a position to support in those efforts. And also innovative initiatives, right? I think Chair Stevens talked about what are many, many different ways we continue to have to think about this. And we have traditionally partnered with city agencies and we are continuing to gonna make that priority, right? When there are new ideas coming up, what can we do to think about metrics, think about tech tech assistance, think about strategizing to kind of push those initiatives out? And also another thing I wanna highlight on a more specific side is with NYC WELL, we have seen an increase in usage, right? Because that is maybe more known now in the community. So, uh, we also see that, um, I think, um, Ronnie kind of talked about it already, more youth being reached by mobile crisis teams. So that's an increase in connection to care. And, um, also mentioned earlier, and I will say it again here, is partnering with DYCD, D Y H M H on continuing effort of what other, um, groups are not hearing NYC WELL enough or other resources enough. So that is, um, kind of consolidated and folks don't need to kind of figure out, okay, you give me all these different numbers, like, which one is for me, right? So that there is less of that burden on on community.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that actually? Cause, um, for the New York City WELL Evaluation Final Report that was done in June twenty twenty, it looked at, um, what is it? It, the report was saying that two-thirds of people calling NYC WELL on behalf of themselves were between ages eighteen and forty-four. But there weren't that many that were reported that were adolescents between age thirteen and seventeen. But, um, I know that they're expanding. So I I believe the mayor had announced in July that New York City WELL is expanding because of an increase in ten point eight million dollars that were invested from the state side, um, state OMH. And so are there any conversations around, you know, to Elthea's point, right? Like, we need to meet them where they are and that's like the mantra of social workers in general too. It's like, you have to meet them where they are. And so I'm just wondering, have there been any any discussions on creating any sort of initiatives or outreach campaigns that are targeting that certain, that that are targeting that age group?
Yeah, um, we're working, we're gonna connect, we're connecting together because, um, members of, um, OCMH team are working on strategies to to make NYC WELL more targeted to youth people, youth, including like at DYCD drop-in centers, that fourteen to twenty-four age range. And we're also looking at ways to continue to market and outreach our services, um, especially for vulnerable youth. So we've got, uh, you know, we're connecting this week or next week to think about how do we work, merge, that our thinking around those campaigns to try to see if there are synergies and ways we could ma- maximize our efforts.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I thi- I think, and and that's the other piece I think is important too, right? Like, cause I think folks forget that DYCD has a host of other programs, right? They do, and it's not just youth services, right? They have like these father initiatives and these other programs is thinking about how do we make sure that all of those things are being tapped in and and connected to the mental health services piece as well. Um, I also just wanna acknowledge that the last question and the and the next two questions I have are questions that were submitted from the public. Um, and so these were questions that they wanted us to make sure that we asked. And I'm not sure if DYCD had something they wanted to add around the success stories that they had around, um, mental health services for young people.
I I did, I wanted to say, like, if we're going down the line.
Yeah.
Expansion of services for young people, connection points with caring adults. So definitely expansion of youth services, we've seen in this administration. Um, infusion of mental health and, um, knowledge about mental health and resources into all of our programs. And meeting people where they are, I wanted to add to that, just since you both raised it, Chair Chair Lee as well. For example, we're gonna keep doing that. You talked about the libraries, we talked about the training. Um, the Summer Youth Employment Program is, it has integrated a wellness, like wellness at work, um, curriculum into their into their hats and ladders, um, which is the education, um, you know, resource for young people working in the summertime. And there was a project last year just before Director Wong's, um, um, uh, term, a well-being in color. And this was also at Cornerstones. It was, um, peer facilitators, um, Black and Latinx youth. I wasn't sure if it was what was the gender was. I don't know if it was like primarily male, so I didn't weigh in on that. But, um, it ranging in age twelve to seventeen, had a, they had a facilitated conversation so that they could be peer leaders. It was a five-week program. Um, they received, uh, trainer actually from licensed protectors practitioners in Texas. I'll have to get back to you on on how that partnership came about, but it sounds interesting. Um, aimed at reducing stigma, um, talking about treatment and and using young people themselves to to, um, to support their peers.
Yeah, that sounds like a lot of good stuff. But I will say this and I and, um, Susan, you've heard me say this before, just even thinking about the application process for young people and and even with SYP thinking about, how do we use that as a focal point to say, young people, what services do you need, right? Like, how do we make sure that we are asking the right questions? You know, um, you know, for after school and all these things, like, we have, you know, a lot of times, I remember those applications. We ask a lot of information and it's like key stuff around like, what do you need isn't being asked. And I think when we think about like places where that are struggling, even if we just ask the question, we might catch a couple more people. And so I think that it's important for us to think about, you know, being more intentional about these things. And and, you know, you heard me say this at the SYP hearing where it's just like, that should be one of the top questions. Do you need mental health services? Do you need a home? Do you need, you know, do you need food? You know, what do you need and really trying to do a better job at like having a laundry list? We have access to them, we have them there in a door. Why are we not trying to get all the information from them? And so I know some CBOs sometimes do that with like supplement applications, but I think as a city, we should also be moving in that direction as well. So the next question I have from the public is, what do you perceive to be as a gaps or problems within the system of mental health services for youth in NYC? And what do you think could be done to improve those services? You all don't have to answer at once. I know you're so eager to answer that.
I'm just gonna mention one, uh, one thing, I think, unless I go off on a tangent. But I I would say, um, the workforce issue is just, uh, very challenging. I mean, I think first and foremost, I think it's just, we're seeing it everywhere, not just in youth serving systems, but just across the board. So to me, that feels like it's a pretty urgent need, uh, and, uh, important important gap.
No, that is, it's a huge issue that I don't think that people talk about enough, which is why a lot of folks are getting burnt out and changing professions. Like, all right, I can't do this anymore, right? So I think that that's a huge issue and I think it's important to raise. Cause we need to be thinking about how do we want to encourage people to be, to go into that profession? How do we make sure people are not getting burnt out? And what supports people need to stay, you know, for retention? So I think that that is a very important one.
I would add that, um, I think this system, as we've said many times, is very both rich and complex. Like, there's many types of services or there's many, um, city and state, uh, entities that are offering services. And that's both a benefit and, um, can be a drawback in trying to understand where to go for help, where to begin, um, where you can find it. So I think, um, one area for improvement is is doing better outreach and education, right? Of youth, of families, um, of others who support youth and families, right? Like, we've talked about today, so that that there's clarity, right, on on where to begin and how to access what you need.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think question is about how how we being, what what do we see as gaps and what do we see as, um, issues? So what you touch on with the workforce and really just the wait time is outrageous right now. And I think some data that we're looking at for children to get, uh, any valuation alone, it takes three months. And how about those who haven't even made the call, right? Cause if I know I'm finally ready to try to get services and I have to wait three months.
I'm not, yeah.
Many things gonna happen in the three months, right? So the workforce issue, as I said, we're actively retention and also looking at not just a narrow definition or who are the qualifying professionals? And what are the, um, services and supports that don't need to be, right? Um, provided by a licensed professional. So we're looking at those issues. And I think, um, earlier in the, in our, um, in the hearing, Chair Lee, you touched on, um, sort of the system, right? Integration of systems, how are we, um, and we have also been involved in a study with Rand Corpse with looking at, um, gaps. And one of the, actually, the number one barrier is communication across systems. So how can we integrate, right? So it's not saying that we have a plan on that, we are very aware and we want to be in conversations and not just in the city level with our agencies, but also with the state to to learn and to see what are the resources that can support that. And another issue, um, it's really all kind of related is, um, areas that have treatment deserts, right? That's very, um, um, a huge issue there. So some, I think, I didn't get to touch on this earlier, and when you were looking at the stats, right, Chair Stevens, is, uh, OCMH, when we're looking at new services, we are very much focusing and prioritizing services in the thirty-three, um, neighborhoods our hardest hit, right? According to, um, the city's Task Force on Racial Inclusion and Equity. So not just, right, equity doesn't mean, right, everybody come and get something, right? So we're prioritizing differently. And, um, yep, also looking at the, what federally has been designated as those shortage areas. Then we will prioritize those community, those conversations, right? Those collaborations strategically and being proactive and intentional, like you said.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and and just even something that I was thinking about, even with the workforce development piece, I think we we don't do a good job of advertising what that work looks like. Because most people think you either have to be a therapist or a psychologist or a social worker. And if you don't have a mental health service, you wouldn't, I mean, issue or or anything like that, you don't even know those things actually exist, right? And so I think, um, you know, when we're thinking about initiatives and things like that, how are we exposing young people to these professions? You don't like, when you talk to most young kids, they're like, I wanna be a doctor, I wanna be a lawyer, I wanna be a basketball player and those things. But but they say those things because that's what they see. And so I think we should definitely be doing a better job at exposing young people across the city to this profession. Even take myself, I. Um, even take myself, I would have never thought I would have worked with young people because I knew I didn't want to be a teacher. And I was just like, I don't wanna be a teacher, I don't wanna do that. But I never knew that youth services was an actual profession that I can get into and was, and I dedicated twenty years of my life to do that and continue to dedicate my life to that, because everything I do is for young people. But I think the problem is, young people don't even know that exists. Um, and so, I, I don't, you know, we, I don't have the answer here, but I think that that's something we should continue to have a dialogue on, to think about how are we exposing young people to this work? How, what does it look like, even in the nonprofit field? And those things are, you know, even your, your roles, right? Like, you don't know, like, if you ask a young person what any of you did, they would have no idea, they're like, I don't know. Right? And so, I think we, um, we need to do a better job at just like kind of exposure on what that looks like and, and just be creative. So, um, you know, just throwing it out there. So, the last question I have from the public is, how can the council better support youth mental health services in NYC, other than money? Because I don't know what I was gonna say. How can we better support, um, mental health services in NYC? How could the council?
That's a great question. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna acknowledge like your support that my colleagues have recognized around SYP and placing young people into jobs so that they can understand what a city council person is and, and what these, you know, government jobs are. And adding to that, I'm wanted to say, like, in SYP this summer, there was a mental health panel run by OCMH and Deputy Mayor Wright, which was geared toward exposing young people to the jobs, like, to, to jobs in mental health, to careers, to some of the mental health issues.
I love that. We should definitely make that a bigger thing next year so that more young people can get it, because I'm sure that it was not a lot of kid, young, because my SYP wasn't, intern wasn't there. So, definitely thinking about that, love that idea, and hopefully build that out more next year.
Yeah, we're committed to continuing that, yeah.
And I just want to echo what you just mentioned, because I know that for myself and a lot of the immigrant communities that I was growing up in, people don't talk about social work, nonprofit, that's not something you do or go into as a career. And so, that is something that I just happened to literally by chance stumble upon through a friend. Um, and so, I think, you know, if we could do more of that outreach and, and really do the recruitment piece, I think that would be successful. And I'm also, as a former board member of NAMI New York City Metro, I'm a huge fan of, um, the peer-to-peer, family-to-family services. I think there's a lot that can be done in non-clinical settings that are proven evidence-based models that are very effective, very impactful, that can support what you guys are already doing. But, you know, that will add to the quality of care and success of someone's, um, you know, either diagnosis, or even if it's less serious than a diagnosis, help someone through dealing with, um, you know, the after impacts of COVID. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chairs, and thank you very much, Administration. We really appreciate your time. You may go.
Or if you want to stay and hear testimony from the public, that's good, too.
That's what I meant, you may go.
Yes, yeah.
We do welcome you to stay and hear testimony from the public.
Encourage you to stay.
Encouraging you to stay, yeah. Um, we will now hear in-person testimony from the public. I'd just like to remind everyone that I will call up individuals in panels, and all testimony will be limited to about two minutes. The first panel will be Jose Cotto from Institute for Community Living, Phoebe Richmond from The Door, Anna Arkin Gallagher from Brooklyn Defender Services, and Kimberly Swartz from Legal Aid Society. And I believe someone had indicated they had to leave, so that you, yeah, so you, you may begin when ready. Uh, when the sergeant cues you, apologies.
Hello? Oh, much better. I was gonna use my outdoor voice. Greetings, Chair Stevens and members of the Committees on Youth Services and Mental Health, Disabilities and Addiction. My name is Jose Cotto, and I'm the Senior Vice President for Residential Treatment at ICL. ICL is a community-based behavioral health organization with nearly four decades of experience, serving New Yorkers with various levels of mental and behavioral health needs. We offer a continuum of care for over a thousand children and youth with all levels of acuity. We do this in schools, community clinics, through community-based programs like CFTSS and OnTrack, and through our housing programs. One unique program is Emerson Davis Family Development Center, which works to help children with their parents by addressing the mental health challenges parents face so that they can care for their children. It's also a way to end homelessness. I'm sure I don't need to tell you that nothing is more important to the development of a child and to their future well-being than growing up with a consistently-present adult who loves them unconditionally. We strive to ensure every child that Emerson Davis in has the opportunity, and we've been extremely successful. As from a society perspective, what I think is really important about a program like Emerson is its success in prevention. Clearly, the better we do at addressing mental health challenges before they escalate, the better off we all are. But the fact is, everyone can get better. The nonprofits do this work and are committed to supporting everyone in their journey to well-being. But there's only so much we can do, we need support specifically in form of dollars and workforce development. I know you all know about the struggles nonprofits face in paying workers fair wages. The people who work at nonprofits are mission-driven. Unfortunately, landlords and grocery stores won't take that as a form of payment. We also need to attract more people to the field, which is what I previously heard. And maybe there's something that the City of New York could do to make social service jobs more attractive beyond the pay. We need creative campaigns to inspire people to enter the field, and we look forward to more help on both fronts and opportunity, thank you for the opportunity to testify here.
Thank you. I just had a real quick question around, um, where, where, um, where do you provide your services at mostly?
So, we're in all the boroughs. Um, we have a big, big emphasis in Brooklyn, uh, and we have over a hundred types of programs, uh, because we serve children, youth, adults, and families, um, so it's a broad spectrum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Testing, okay. Good afternoon, Chairs Lee and Stevens. Hi, my name is Kimberly Swartz. I am an attorney from the Legal Aid Society, and I work in the juvenile rights practice. Uh, we represent the vast majority of children in family court in abuse, neglect, and juvenile delinquency proceedings. Um, the lack of increasingly needed mental health services for children and their families um, further increases the likelihood of family separation by the Administration for Children's Services. Children removed from their parents typically experience significant trauma on top of any pre-existing mental health issues. As a result, many children in foster care have a high and immediate need for mental health services. Almost all children placed in foster care are Medicaid-eligible, and therefore, they typically need to access mental health services through providers that accept Medicaid. Unfortunately, children and families often face appalling delays in accessing mental health care. It is all too common to see that our clients have to wait months to begin treatment with a provider. This lack of services can have lifetime negative consequences for these children. Parents are also denied timely access to mental health services and supports. As a result, they are unable to obtain services that would facilitate timely family reunification, um, further extending children's say, in foster care unnecessarily. Even where families are reunited, reunification can often fail without timely access to mental health services, and I've seen this firsthand. Primary preventive services, which are services that are not tied to ACS investigations or family court proceedings, are the best way to address needs arising from mental health issues within a family. Primary preventive services not only reduce the risk of court involvement and family separation, thereby reducing harm to children, but they can also reduce the likelihood of involvement in the juvenile legal, legal system. Additionally, services for LGBTQ plus youth must be, I, I'm almost finished, thank you. Um, additionally, service, services for LGBTQ plus youth must be increased, and, um, this includes through creative pathways such as mobile crisis centers, uh, crisis units and advertising campaigns to increase awareness. Further, funding is needed to support youth shelters that specialize in supporting youth with more serious and persistent mental health needs among the runaway and homeless youth population. To serve youth generally, community and home-based services, including primary preventive services, require more funding, and additionally, the city must incentivize providers to accept Medicaid in order to increase the availability of providers and enhanced access for children and their families to adequate mental health care. Thank you.
Hi, hear me? Um, my name is Phoebe Richmond, I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I'm the clinical supervisor for the Counseling and, um, Adolescent Health Center at The Door, um, where I've worked for about eight years. Um, so, The Door was established in the early seventies with the vision of meeting young people where they are and providing comprehensive services and integrated services, um, so they can reach their full potential. Um, we serve up to eleven thousand young people a year across four locations in New York City. Um, our sort of central location in SoHo has, um, comprehensive services. We have healthcare, education, career services, legal services, nutrition, arts, um, and mental health. So, all of this is free, and, um, it's in a diverse caring environment is kind of the plan. So, the mental health support at The Door is grounded in these same principles of holistic and youth-centered care. We have a range of options across our mental health continuum, from individualized psychotherapy and psychiatry to more embedded supports in our career services, in our legal services, in our medical center. Um, and all staff at The Door, whether mental health-trained or not, create a safe judgment, uh, non-judgmental space for youth, um, and build trusting relationships that reduce barriers to more formalized care. Um, so, we're really seeing that since the pandemic started, our young people were really isolated, and they were removed from the supports, from the activities that helped them cope in the past. Existing mental health symptoms were exacerbated, and new mental health symptoms began to arise. Um, for those who were unhoused or disconnected from their families, this pandemic worsened a crisis that already existed. Um, and for folks who had left unsafe home environments, many were forced back into those situations um, without the supports that they had in the past. Um, so, this has really significantly increased demand for mental health services specifically at The Door. Sorry. Um, and as you've all mentioned, at the same time, mental health workers have experienced all of the same traumas and losses and stressors and the vicarious trauma of all of this, and are leaving the field. It's increasingly difficult to hire, um, we have positions that stay open. And so, those of us who are left are really struggling to kind of hold all of that. Um, the folks who were up here before were talking about kind of those integrated services, difficulty finding these access points, the system feels opaque, there are wait lists up to six months, clinics that aren't taking new clients at all. Um, so, we find ourselves kind of stuck with not really knowing where to go outside of our walls. Um, so, really just advocating for clarity, advocating for, um, sorry, what was my wording? Um, yeah, the sort of embedded mental health care, increased funding for mental health in all sectors of programming, I think, has been really successful at The Door and is something that we really support. Um, and then also just funding to support mental health providers and decrease burnout. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Anna Arkin Gallagher. I'm a supervising attorney and policy counsel in the education practice at Brooklyn Defender Services. Thank you to Chair Stevens and Lee for holding this hearing and the opportunity to testify. BDS's education unit provides legal representation and informal advocacy to our school-age clients and parents of children in New York City schools. Many of our clients are involved in the criminal legal system or have cases in family court. And like some others you will be hearing from later today, I think, we're also a member of the Campaign for Effective Behavioral Supports in Schools. Across our practices, we often see a pattern where mental health supports are not offered or made available until things have reached a crisis point. Whether that's a school making a call to EMS for a student experiencing behavior challenges, a new case being filed by ACS because a family was unable to access therapy, or a young person with mental illness being unable to access services until after an arrest. And even then, the young people we work with are often unable to access all of the services that they need. Today, I want to focus specifically on behavior supports in schools, though. We frequently interact with schools that lack the toolkit and school personnel to inclusively educate students with behavioral and mental health challenges. When students begin experiencing behavior issues in schools, schools often do not appropriately create or implement and review behavior plans for these students or provide the other mental health and behavioral supports these students need. Consequently, as these behavioral challenges get more severe, their parents report repeated calls to pick up their children from school early, calls to EMS, um, sometimes ACS cases. At this point, our clients often feel their only option is to move their children into more restrictive settings like District Seventy-Five, where students are completely segregated from their non-disabled peers. And even there, we often find students aren't given the clinical and behavioral supports they need to make progress and are instead subject to exclusionary discipline and policing. As you heard earlier, the city has taken some promising steps to confront this problem, like the Mental Health Continuum, which you heard about, and the PATH Program, um, which is an inclusion model for students with behavioral disabilities. But these programs are small and can't serve the large number of students who could benefit. So, the city has to work to ensure a range of behavioral and mental health supports are available in all schools to make sure the students receive the assistance they need when they need it, without being suspended or arrested, having EMS called on them, risking ACS involvement, or being sent to an overly restrictive environment. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Of course, I have questions. So, I, you know, I, I hear like the running theme of, um, you know, we're talking about the workforce development. Um, what are some ideas, or what do you think, um, city council can do to help with this issue? Um, do you guys have any suggestions or ideas? And then the next question I have is, um, one of the things I found when I was in, um, in the nonprofit world, a lot of things was like kind of keeping young people in there and, and having internships and giving them opportunities, and really growing them throughout the agency, right? Like, so, starting out as a group leader, and a lot of them ended up being our directors and things like that. Are your programs using those type of models to kind of get young people excited and interested in the field?
And also, we'll notate that, I think we agree, you know, obviously, increased funds, COLAs, you know, pay parity, uh, loan forgiveness, all these things are things that we have been discussing, but I would love to hear from your perspective, yeah.
I'm literally the Just Pay princess, so, everybody knows I'm out here fighting for your money, so.
Yeah, I was really just gonna say more money. Um, but I do, I do think that, um, a lot of what you've spoken about, of sort of like the non-traditional mental health support is a big one as well, and really empowering folks to be youth development workers, to be mental health advocates without necessarily the formal training or licensing. I think one of the things that we always say at The Door when we're hiring new people, that it's like, you know, whatever expertise you're coming in with, whether you're a job placement specialist or you're a chef, or you're, um, a nurse practitioner, that like you are a youth development worker first at The Door. And so, part of that really involves, I think, training people in what that means. And then some of the things that you were talking about, Chair Stevens, of like, just asking questions, being curious, being nosey, however you want to frame it.
It's nosey, it's okay.
Yeah.
I'm very nosey.
Deeply nosey, yeah. So, um, really just, if there's something that a young person says that prompts you to ask a question, ask that question. Um, and so, really kind of empowering people in all sectors to feel more comfortable engaging in the more difficult conversations.
Yeah, I just think it's important, because even my journey in youth development, I started out teaching government part-time to young people. And they saw, like, I was working at Henry Street, and they saw that I was nosey, which is why I then got hired to be a case manager, and then I was a program director, and all these things just, and like I said, I never thought I would work with young people because I didn't want to be a teacher. I never thought I would work with young people because I didn't want to be a teacher. But I think those things are really important, and I think it's important to uplift those models in a lot of the agencies and workforces, and I think it'll be helpful. Yes, and councilmen probably know something to first find our high schools, right? Like thinking about, you know, we've been talking a lot about vocational high schools and things like that, that's, this should be part of that conversation.
And, just, oh. I'm sorry.
If that's okay. I'm just to add, in addition to youth development, and I wanted to go back to the funding issue, from my conversation speaking with mental health providers, part of the issue with having a sufficient number of providers that accept Medicaid, is that to receive reimbursement for Medicaid, it is an incredibly bureaucratic, tedious process for very little pay. And so I think the city should explore subsidizing the Medicaid reimbursements that providers receive in order to incentivize them. And additionally, in line with, I'm sorry, I didn't catch it, with what Phoebe just said, exploring alternative modalities such as art therapy, music therapy, and also supporting where it's appropriate, access to telehealth, because we are seeing, at least for exceptional rate, children receiving exceptional rate foster care. It's my understanding that some, if not all, are prohibited from receiving telehealth, and in some circumstances, it may be appropriate because they're an older, older youth, or it may be an important stopgap until something, something in person becomes available.
Yeah, and I just want to echo even around the Medicaid issue of thinking about how are we working with our state and federal partners? Often, the candace kicked to the city around subsidizing these things, and people forget about our other colleagues, and I think that it's important that we also hold them accountable in the same way that folks often like to hold the city accountable, like, oh, we should subsidize. No, they should actually be pushing to fight for that a little bit more.
Well, also the sad reality too, and I'm sure you know this from the, it's an Article 31, right? Clinic, it's not an Article 31, okay.
It's 28.
28, oh, okay, so FQHCs, right? So, so coming from, starting in Article 31, Medicaid actually does reimburse the most, which is sad. It's the private insurance companies and Medicare that reimburse less, and so that is something that we need to work on with our state partners, because that's, that's all state, Medicaid is all state, and so that's something that we need to push, actually.
Yeah. I'm sorry, did he have a question? Okay.
Thank you all.
Well, I think he was.
Sorry, I finally got the gist of the button, you saw me holding it down earlier? Very embarrassing.
No, it's not, you are fine.
Thank you. No, I was just gonna add that really focusing on the marketing and messaging for our communities, because there's still too much stigma, so breaking that down. So I also teach at NYU, and it's, it's just a common theme in all the different settings that I'm part of, where even when we're trying to work with organizations that have been establishing communities for years, their biggest fear is the community rejecting them when they all of a sudden partner with a nonprofit. So part of that is what's been mentioned already, is about being very creative with how you brand mental health and behavioral health needs in general, so that people, it's more appealing, people buy into it quicker, especially like key informants in the community. It almost makes me want to do like a parade, like one of those parades that we have, like I'll just replace the Puerto Rican Parade one weekend and just do.
Let's talk about it, because I'm all about, I'm all about craziness, so we should definitely talk, because that sounds great.
I also do salsa dancing on the side, so we could do a lot of things.
Creative, I think we should do a salsa mental health day, we'll talk offline, all those things down great.
But yeah, just that piece. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next in-person panel will be Amy Morgenstern from JCCA, Melanie Wilkerson from Center for Court Innovation, and Nelson Marr from Bronx Legal Services.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Lee and Chair Stevens and members of the committee. Thank you for allowing me to testify on behalf of the clients and staff of JCCA, a 200-year-old organization that provides behavioral health, foster care, residential prevention, and educational services to 17,000 of New York State's children and families each year. My name is Dr. Amy Morgenstern, and I am the Assistant Vice President of Behavioral Health and Wellness at JCCA. Our behavioral health and wellness programs support youth with serious behavioral and mental health challenges, many of whom have experienced complex trauma. Our programs include health homes, community and family treatment services, home and community-based services, Center for Healing, psychology services, and an Article 31 clinic. Last year, JCCA also became the first Youth Act provider in New York City, providing intensive wraparound clinical and social supports to youth at risk of or recently discharged from psychiatric hospitalizations. Many of our programs provide services to youth directly in their homes and communities. Our continuum of care allows us to serve clients as their needs change over time, with fewer gaps to fall through. In addition to therapy and assessments, we provide referrals for housing and food assistance, psychoeducation so parents can better support their children, and advocacy in schools. Meeting our clients where they are is key to improving engagement, thereby reducing self-harm, hospitalizations, crises, and severe outcomes. The current mental health crisis among young people has been widely documented. Depression, anxiety, and disordered eating are on the rise, not to mention suicide, which is already the third-leading cause of death among young adults. Mental health-related emergency department visits among teens increased by 31% during the pandemic. In New York, demand for behavioral health services increased by 77%. Programs are stretched beyond capacity. Reimbursements, workforce, and equity issues directly affect service accessibility and availability. Providers like JCCA need more funding to recruit and retain talented employees, cover indirect costs, I'm almost done, and expand services in the face of the crisis. In particular, in light of current workforce challenges and high inflation, the city should fund and enforce an automatic annual cost-of-living adjustment on all contracts. And to increase diversity and support equity in our mental health workforce, the city should establish incentives like loan forgiveness, tuition assistance, and salary scales that include competitive wages for non-masters level staff. We ask for city council to advocate on behalf of New York's children and families and commit to equitable funding for behavioral health. Effective life-changing interventions are very much possible and especially worth investing in at this crucial moment. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, I look forward to collaborating to help New York City's youth access critical mental health services. Thank you.
May I begin? Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Chair Stevens, and members of the Youth Services and Mental Health Disabilities and Addiction Committees. My name is Melanie Wilkerson, I am a program manager of youth and community programs with the Center for Court Innovations Staten Island Justice Center site. And I'm here today to represent the center to continue to reiterate our mission and vision that we exist to help contribute to a fair, effective, and humane justice system in improving public safety and community-driven solutions. Our firsthand experience operating direct service programs and conducting original research does uniquely position us to offer insights to this council, which hopefully could apply if you consider initiatives that respond to young New Yorkers. I cannot stress this enough, mental health and the justice system cannot be siloed from each other, they are inextricably intertwined, and especially now more than ever compounded by the effects of COVID-19, which still weigh heavily on already under-resourced communities, are teaching us in real time and hopefully equipping us with more proactive solutions on what we feel youth and families are needing to improve their holistic sense of wellness. My work on Staten Island has really been able to evolve and adapt to meet the needs of youth and families over the past several years I've been at the center, such as our Youth Wellness Initiative, which markets itself as a program that not only provides mental health supports, but also has a specific emphasis on holistic wellness to combat the lack of, to address the variety of issues that also come with addressing a young person and family's mental health, such as combating lack of healthcare, affordable housing, food insecurity, life skills of development, and et cetera. And to conclude, knowing that we're coming low on time, you'll see with the materials that I submitted to you all, that our footprint across the city has exponentially grown, and in our ability to connect with a variety of communities throughout New York City, we have a good pulse on what has been going on in real time and what we feel are the supports needed to be responsive to. I'll conclude my testimony by saying this. I know our mantra, together with many other community-based organizations, city agencies, and schools of thought invoke the saying, "We meet youth and families or people where they're at." But I want to positively push the pen of our collective sense of accountability here. Instead of meeting people where they're at, the charge of CCI and my call to your committees today would be that we continue to dismantle the barriers of accessing mental health services, environmental disparities, and systemic disparities that way too often are a part of a larger culprit of what affects youth and families throughout the city. The center stands ready to go beyond transforming the justice system itself and cultivating vibrant and prosperous communities that center health, wellness, and security to promote wholeness for youth and families throughout this city. Thank you.
Sorry, I think I have a Mark Rubio moment here. Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Chair Stevens, and the rest of the committee, committees, excuse me, for the opportunity to testify at this oversight hearing to discuss the mental health services for New York City's youth. My name is Nelson Marr, I'm an attorney at Bronx Legal Services, which is part of the Legal Services NYC umbrella. We're the largest legal services provider in the country, we provide free civil legal services to low-income individuals, we're funded by the federal, state, and city governments. I work in the education law unit, our unit provides representation to families regarding any issues in the New York City public schools. Most of our casework is, involves representing students with disabilities, ensuring that they receive a free and appropriate public education, and also representing students who are facing disciplinary action. For the longest time, our organization was one of the fewest, one of the few organizations in the city providing that type of representation. And through that work, we've sort of honed into the intersection of these two issues, because our experience through that direct representation is that children who lie at that intersection are actually the most at risk, children with disabilities and who are facing disciplinary actions and who are exhibiting behavioral issues. And that led us to the work around the issue of EMS-ing. And our office filed the groundbreaking lawsuit back in 2013 against the city to stop the inappropriate use of, by school officials of calling EMS on children who are having emotional and behavioral crises. That work also led us to form, you know, a coalition of sorts, the Campaign for Effective Behavioral Students, Supports for Students, which we supplied you with our vision statement. I want to just spend a quick minute, if that's possible, to uplift two of what we believe are the most important recommendations in this vision statement, and the first is the healing-centered schools approach. And you've heard a lot talked about the issues of workforce development, about meeting the need, and, and what we really need to get at is a universalist approach. And this is something that would really address that, because we cannot really be talking about all the top-tier issues, you know, relying on the fact that children will have to get individualized services. So healing-centered schools approach is, is an approach that we've actually pushed into the public schools already. It was initiated under the Mayor de Blasio's administration, and unfortunately, it hasn't been renewed this year. We, we were able to get the city to agree to train all staff on trauma-responsive educational practices. We also got the city to agree to initiate a parent healing ambassador program, which would actually help parents get engaged with this work and then turnkey it into their communities. So this is really, we believe, an important approach to really address the universalist issues. And then the, the second recommendation that I really want to uplift is the Mental Health Continuum. And, and that is something that the city council has already supported, and we believe that it is important to address those students at the highest level of need, you know, to ensure that they are getting the access to services. And as you've heard from prior testimony, that's not necessarily happening, because everyone is siloed, and the agencies, as you mentioned, Chair Stevens, are not connecting with each other, and there's no, there's no through line. So, so we really want to highlight that issue, that there is that huge need for the Mental Health Continuum. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, to just even look at some of this briefly, and even what you're talking about, I would love to set up some time to talk offline about this, because I think that it's important. It's apparently, councilman Willie, as well. But I think that this is important, and, and, and obviously, this is in schools, but I think we also should be thinking about how are we doing this through programming throughout the city? Because often, the alternative for programming, kids just get kicked out, right? And, and we don't talk about that, because like people see enrichment and after-school as a luxury, when it's really not, because we know that students who are in those programs thrive because of all the things that they get, and so really, I think that this is important, but we should be thinking about how do we roll this out in all programs where young people are at, because it's important. Because I've been in multiple programs where students would just be kicked out of the program or suspended for a number of days, and it isn't really addressing the issue that needs to be addressed. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. your hand and ensure that you fill out a witness slip from the sergeant. As a reminder, testimony may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Seeing no one else, we will now proceed to remote testimony. If you are testifying remotely, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and you may begin once the sergeant queues you. The first panel will be Nadia Chait from Coalition for Behavioral Health, Jessica Fear from VNS Health, Mary Adams from University Settlement, and Daphne Torres Douglas from Children's Village. Nadia, you may begin, once the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun. Good afternoon, Chair Lee, Chair Stevens, thank you so much for holding this hearing today. Throughout the discussion today, we've highlighted a lot of the issues that our youth are facing and the challenges that they face in accessing mental health care. I'm Nadia Chait, I'm the Assistant Vice President at the Coalition for Behavioral Health. We represent about 100 mental health and substance use providers throughout New York, many of whom you've already heard from today, and many more of whom you're going to hear from in the rest of the testimony. And I'll leave it to them to really talk in detail about the challenges that they're facing in serving youth and in staffing their programs. But I want to highlight a couple of the solutions that we think would be really helpful as we look to improve access to services for youth, as well as the cultural competency of the services that they receive. So first, I would just like to really lend my support to what has already been mentioned today of the importance of a COLA on mental health contracts, and the need to provide additional salary and support for the staff who work in our programs. And I really want to say that that's critical at all levels, that's critical for those who might not have a degree, or might have a bachelor's degree, it's critical for peer and family support. It's critical for peer and family support staff, and it's critical for our licensed clinical staff at every level up to and including child psychiatrists who are almost impossible to find. So some of the solutions for those staff will look a little different depending on the level, but at every level of staff, we're experiencing really scary vacancies and challenges recruiting staff. So it's critical that we address at every level. I was really excited to hear the discussion about how we expose youth more to these careers. That's something that our members have been talking about a lot. How do we get folks to understand what this work is, that it is rewarding and meaningful and that they can help their communities? And we actually have some recommendations on that that came out of a workforce development group that we had, so I'd really love to share those in greater detail of how we can get into high schools and build out, you know, internships and pathways for youth to get into these careers and to understand the breadth of these careers. It's not just social work, it's a really wide range of things that you can do in this field. I also think it's really critical that we expand access to services in schools. Schools are such hubs for students, and so we think it's really important to expand access to school-based mental health clinics. These are full mental health clinic locations that operate onsite in schools. They can really integrate services with schools in very exciting ways. They can provide crisis services, medication, peer support, and they can serve the whole family by both being in the school and the community. They can serve the child during the school day, they can serve the parents maybe on the weekends or later at night when that's a better time for the parent. They can serve siblings who might go to a different school and really keep that child engaged in care as they shift through their, through their life. Unfortunately, these clinics currently are pretty financially challenging for agencies to provide and tend to lose money, so we'd really like to see the council step up and provide some operating support for those clinics to both help the existing clinics and to expand services to an additional 100 schools that don't currently have that service onsite. I would also like to note on the payment side that while the city does not control the Medicaid rates, the city is a large employer that, I'll just make my last point, the city is a very large employer that maintains commercial health insurance plans for its own employees, and the city's plans often pay, as many plans like these do, very abysmal rates for these services. That is something that the city can directly address, is the mental health reimbursement rates that its own employees are able to access, and that can have a critical impact both in helping its employees' children access services, but also as the city as a leader for similarly large employers and how to do this well and expand access to services. Thanks for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Jessica Fear. You may begin once the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Okay, thank you. Hoping you can hear me okay. Good afternoon, Chairs Lee and Stevens, members of the committees. My name is Jessica Fear. I'm the Senior Vice President for Behavioral Health at VNS Health, formerly the Visiting Nurse Service of New York. I appreciate the opportunity to testify today, and I'll just summarize from my submitted written testimony. VNS Health provides home and community-based treatment and care management services to vulnerable children and adolescents in every borough, primarily through our Children's Mobile Crisis Teams, Home-Based Crisis Intervention Teams, an Article 31 clinic, a Children's Health Home Teams, and several other crisis intervention services in the South Bronx. About 90% of the youth we serve are members of racial or ethnic minority communities, and almost all are either uninsured or qualify for Medicaid. You've already spoken to the distressing statistics about the state of children's mental health services today. Decades of underinvestment in the system have led to an overwhelming workforce and access shortage, while at the same time, the need for services only continues to dramatically increase. So with that in mind, here are our recommendations. To recruit and retain a sustainable mental health workforce, which many people have spoken to today, we need some key investments: COLA for New York City-funded programs, parity between contracted, city-employed, mental health workers, tuition assistance and loan forgiveness to build a mental health workforce pipeline, and especially support for safety in the field training for staff working in areas at times when public safety is a significant concern. In addition, we strongly encourage the expansion of Children's Mobile Crisis Teams. Today, there are one per borough, and an expansion of resources to ensure all of these teams are able to continue to respond quickly to the crises. We strongly support additional investment in and expansion of Home-Based Crisis Intervention Teams. As you know, these teams offer critical, family-centered intervention to divert youth from costly inpatients days. HBCI has been operating for more than 25 years, yet has not seen a meaningful funding increase since its inception. And lastly, and quite possibly most importantly, as others have stated, we really encourage facilitation of true partnerships with the New York City Department of Education and Community Behavioral Health Agencies. As you've heard repeatedly, there's an ongoing shortage of resources to assist school personnel with successfully intervening in behavioral health crises on campus. This results in overreliance on law enforcement, emergency departments, and it often compounds the trauma already facing the very youth they're trying to help. We really encourage the city to facilitate these meaningful partnerships between schools and behavioral health agencies in order to provide rapid responses to behavioral health crises on campus, safe interventions, and of course, connection to treatment in the home and in the community. Thank you, Chairs Lee and Stevens, for dedicating this oversight hearing to Mental Health Services and NYC for the youth of our communities. We stand ready to partner with you to address this crisis. I'm sort of shocked that I made it within my two-minute window.
Thank you. Next will be Mary Adams from University Settlement. You may begin once the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Thank you, Chairs Lee and Stevens and committee members, for the opportunity to speak. I am Mary Adams, the Associate Executive Director for Mental Health at University Settlement. For over 130 years, we have provided a wide variety of services, including mental health programs, to families and children across Manhattan and Brooklyn. We know firsthand the increased need for mental health services for youth. We see it in our clinic, in our home visits, and in schools every day. To meet this need, the city must allocate the necessary funds to support the operations and expansion of preventative and supportive mental health programs. University Settlement has a strong and robust continuum of culturally responsive mental health services for children and adults of all ages. We treat very young children exposed to trauma, provide clinic services for children and adults, and offer children's home-based crisis intervention and family support programs that reach into the community. In the past two years, we've expanded our innovative, family-centered, holistic, mental health services to thousands more children in multiple ways, including through a partnership with District One, in which we're providing mental health support for all, all children enrolled in the district. Still, due to insufficient funding, there are too many children and families we cannot serve. Our clinic's waitlist is approaching 100, and we can, and we continue to see an increase in referrals from schools and the community. CBOs and nonprofits with decades of community-based expertise in mental health operate with shoestring budgets. Insurance reimbursement rates barely cover our clinician salaries, and many children in need are uninsured or undocumented. Inadequate funding limits our ability to recruit and retain staff, undermining longevity and sustainability in the workforce. It's alarming that as the need for services is rising, the workforce is shrinking. Prevention and supportive mental health would offset the need for more intensive and expensive services in many cases, but there is limited funding allocated for these programs, and importantly, no funding for the administrative infrastructure, such as the expense of electronic health databases and billing management systems that are necessary for these programs to succeed. We have an opportunity to be bold and to do what hasn't been done before. The Mayor's Child and Family Mental Health Task Force, which we are honored to be a part of, is a step in the right direction, bringing together leading experts in our city to build a framework for child and family mental health. However, we need far more investment from the city, investment that funds the infrastructure necessary to run these programs so that CBOs like University Settlement with expertise in community's trust can recruit and retain quality staff and provide mental health support to all New Yorkers that all New Yorkers deserve. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Next will be Daphne Torres Douglas from Children's Village. You may begin once the sergeant queues you. Sorry, we can't, we can't, we can't hear you. Are you, can you double-check if you're unmuted? Yes, go ahead. Sorry, we, the audio cut off again. First, yeah, we're having some technical difficulties, apologies. It keeps unmuting you and then muting you automatically. Just give us a couple seconds to figure something out. Due to the difficulties, we're gonna bump to the second panel, but we're gonna keep you on. It seems like you're having audio difficulties, maybe if you could try logging in through your phone to connect with the audio, something like that, but we'll put you first for the next panel. Thank you so much for your patience. So we'll move to the next panel right now, and it'll be Marsha Jean Charles from the Brotherhood Sister Soul and Gisela Rosa from the Brotherhood Sister Soul, as well as Bo Fang from Coalition for Asian American Children and Families, as well as Ada Lynn from the Coalition for Asian American Children and Families. We're gonna let Marsha go first, and then we're gonna try Daphne after her. So just to let everyone know, Marsha, you may begin once the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Hi, everyone again. My name is Dr. Marsha Michelle from the Brotherhood Sister Soul, at which I am the Director of Organizing. For more than 25 years, we at the Brotherhood Sister Soul, or BroSis, have been at the forefront of social justice, educating, organizing, and training the challenge in equity and champion opportunity for all. We at BroSis continue to be deeply concerned by the fact that our schools remain underfunded, under-resourced, and without holistic support for student success. Our vision for education in New York City includes safe, restorative, and healing environments where all students have the opportunity to learn and grow. And to meet this goal, we must equitably resource New York State, and including the city clearly, public schools with support staff and not police. In a nation in which 14 million students are in schools with police but no counselor, nurse, psychologist, or social worker, New York City has more school safety agents, SSAs, than any other school district in the U.S. The presence of police in our schools has disproportionately impacted students who are low-income, Black and Latinx, who are more likely to be the subject of exclusionary discipline and police response at school than their white peers. Ending the school-to-prison pipeline must be seen as something of equal importance to student mental health, as is increasing student support. For some context, the past school year, 2021, 2022, the youngest person restrained was six years old, and the youngest person restrained by metal handcuffs was eight years old. That is all, even though no one under 12 is to be restrained per the 2019 reforms under former Mayor de Blasio. Last year, 12 youth under 12 were. Furthermore, a total of 827 young people were restrained using metal handcuffs, and we have no way of knowing who was in distress thereafter or because of that detainment. A grand total of 91.3% of those youth who were detained in metal handcuffs last year, 755 young people were Black and Latinx, and this number is consistent with data from previous years. The need for mental health support for our young people has increased due to the COVID-19 pandemic. People have spoke about this time and again. In December of last year, 2021, U.S. Surgeon General Vivek Murthy issued a public health advisory stating that we are experiencing a, quote, "devastating mental health crisis among American youth," end quote, "one made worse by the COVID-19 pandemic." For this reason, we employ the New York City and state elected officials to create a budget that funds a student-to-student support staff ratio of 1 to 100. This will necessitate an increase in the budget for New York City public schools so as to quadruple the number of student support staff, including but not limited to guidance counselors, career counselors, college counselors, therapists, and social workers. In order for New York City and state to reach those recommended ratios for social workers and guidance counselors, it would cost an additional $401 million and $147 million respectively per year. This kind of change that we are asking for requires investment in the city and state level, and we hope you will do it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're actually gonna move next to Gisela, since you're both from the same organization. So Gisela, you may begin once the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
My name is Gisela Rosa, and I'm a youth organizer and alumni facilitator at the Brotherhood Sister Soul. I was born and raised in New York City, and I attended public schools my entire life. While in high school in New York City, I always noticed the lack of support students were receiving academically, emotionally, and mentally. The inability to provide New York City students with the resources needed in order to deal with the hardships they come across speaks volumes. Imagine being a student dealing with so much that it is mentally and physically taking a toll on you, affecting your sanity, your performance in school, draining you. Imagine too that there is nothing you can do about it, and that the people who can fix this issue, what do you think it's like believing that your school, the whole public school system, and your city does not intend to ever give you the support you desperately need? When I was 17 years old and a senior in high school, I co-created with a liberation program at the Brotherhood Sister Soul, a campaign to increase student support staff, guidance counselors, therapists, social workers, college advisors, and more, in public schools. Four years have passed since we created that campaign. I am now a college graduate with a bachelor's degree, organizing with the same organization, and nothing has changed. Four years and nothing. Let that sink in for a few. Four years later for me, decades later for some on my team, and the same conversation continues to resurface over and over and over because nothing has been done about it. Is it not sad? Is it not embarrassing? Are y'all not ashamed? Trigger warning: suicide. Students in New York City public schools are still not being taken seriously when it comes to their mental health. Folks never take mental health serious until someone commits suicide, and the conversation about mental health like this circles around for the millionth time, and it is all talked and nothing is done. So when are y'all finally gonna do something about it? This mental health crisis has always been around. It never stopped. It did not just begin. It has simply gotten worse throughout the course of time, and especially during the pandemic. After being on lockdown for months, in isolation, wearing masks, social distancing, classes through Zoom, students lack the proper tools or resources needed to navigate the world and their futures with mental health issues. We all know students should have access and opportunities to take care of their mental health in schools. Many students are always in survival mode. We need therapists, guidance counselors, social workers in schools. We need our students to be supported academically, emotionally, and mentally. We need them to be heard and to feel seen. We need them to feel like someone cares about the things affecting them, draining them... I do not want to be having the same conversation whether it is a year or four from now. I want better for students now. Please do not let a tragedy happen for y'all to finally step in and do what y'all have been asked to do for years. Increase student support staff, prioritize mental health in New York City public schools, let students have access and the opportunity to take care of their mental health. Listen to youth. Listen to youth when they talk about their mental health issues and what they're going through. Y'all have already disappointed 17- and 21-year-old me. Do not disappoint 26-year-old me. Thank you.
Thank you, Gisela, for being here with us today. We really appreciate it.
So we're gonna just circle back to Daphne and see if we can resolve those audio issues. Daphne, you can begin once the sergeant queues you, and we'll see if this works out.
Time has begun.
Thank you for your patience. Can you hear me?
Perfect.
Great. Well, greetings to the committee, and thank you again for your patience and for allowing me to testify. I'm Daphne Torres Douglas, the Vice President at the Children's Village. We provide one of the broadest continuum preventive programming in New York with an emphasis on trauma-informed, evidence-based, family, and community programming to keep at-risk youth safe and at home with families. Mental health stability and well-being are essential building blocks to youth development. When met, when met youth have the foundation needed to navigate life successfully into adulthood, mental health stability and well-being means that youth are developing appropriate social skills, coping skills, and distress tolerance skills, three ingredients necessary for building socialization and communication and relationships. In addition to increased depression and anxiety, the pandemic-induced social isolation has directly and indirectly impacted mental health among young people, as evidenced by the increased disconnection from family, from peers, from faith-based and social activities, and school. And this disconnection is negatively impacting school reentry and truancy in certain neighborhoods with 40% truancy. Over 100,000 of school's children were homeless last year. Youth who lost parents and caregivers to COVID are struggling. There are real issues of mental health and unmet needs due to lack of qualified practitioners, but for most, mental health is a symptom of years of stress... But for most, mental health is a symptom of years of stress resulting from intentionally segregated communities that lack thoughtful, sustained investment, burdened by high-density, low-quality housing, a lack of safe public spaces, and underperforming schools. Here's what our experience informs us. Youth needs access, need access to peer interaction opportunities that foster social skill-building, conflict resolution, and perspective-taking. Youth need access to extra educational support, outreach from preventive treatment models embedded in the schools that can help families link with the schools and partner. Youth and families who want mental health services need access an intentional shift and transformational systemic approach to raise your equity and financial investment in the mental health workforce, schools, communities, and high-quality, affordable, pro-social, interactive opportunities to reduce the impact of trauma, grief, poverty, and social isolation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to Bo Fang from Coalition for Asian American Children and Families. You may begin once the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Hi, good afternoon. Um, first, I want to thank Chair Steven, Chair Lee, and the council for allowing this conversation. My name is Bo Fang, and I'm a senior at Thomas A. Edison High School in Jamaica. I'm a youth advocate at the Asian American Student Advocacy Program, projects, uh, mental health campaign. Our mental health campaign aims to identify mental health needs and challenges faced by AAPI youth in New York City public high schools and to advocate for cultural humility and culturally responsive mental health services in schools. My school is definitely not a school with, um, an abundance of resources. The first impressions of the school for a lot of our students were, this is a great technical high school that will teach you a lot about the fields of studies it offers. Like every other school, my school has its benefits. It has, it gives you a head start if you want to pursue careers in automotive technologies or computer programming. However, despite this one benefit, the resources in the school offers are close to none. Mental health to me and AAPI youth is a very serious topic. In general, AAPI students like myself find it very difficult to discuss feelings about schools, school and their, with their families, often related to fear and stigma surrounding mental health. At the same time, some teachers also have the bias that AAPI students do not face mental health challenges. It should never be up to the individual to simply figure it out. In my own experiences, there were many times where I would feel under, under the weather because of pressure and stress. Being overly stressed can lead to anxiety and worse depression. In addition, many schools, including my own, lack culturally responsive staff, mental health providers, and services. In my school, there is no one checking up to see how the students are doing when students are not causing any academic or behavioral troubles. Some teachers will ask you how you're feeling if they see you in a bad mood, but they are definitely not trained to help you with your mental health. There are no counselors that can regularly sit with students to talk unless a student specifically asks for support. Moreover, some teachers and staff have the tendency to emphasize the importance of academics, which leaves us to internally minimize the importance of mental health. Many of my classmates in AAPI and identifying friends face difficulties with depression and anxiety. I'm a senior, which means that there is a lot of stress with the college application and application process. Many of my senior classmates are also struggling with the immense pressure of the application, the, the application process brings. I know some people who are also dealing with, uh, depression or trauma. Yet many of us keep these feelings and struggles bottled up. AAPI youth face microaggressions in school on a regular basis. However, the school administration is not doing anything to make the school community a safe and welcoming space. There's just not enough culturally responsive care for us. The lack of mental health resources definitely adds up, adds another layer to the challenges in, for my community. My school is nothing close to a specialized high school, nor is it in a high-income area. But I believe mental health should be taken seriously, no matter the, the environment. I believe that everyone deserves to have access to care and support when they need it. They should not be the ones going out of their wages for some mediocre help, but instead have open arms offered to them whenever they need one. In order to achieve this, I believe we need to understand that mental health is more than the absence of clinically diagnosed mental illness. I do not have depression, anxiety, or any mental illness, but that's not to say that I haven't struggled or that I don't deserve care. We all need, we all need and deserve care to feel well and cared for. I hope the city and school can hire more culturally responsive therapists or counselors and care more about the students' mental health from a holistic perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Ada Lynn from Coalition for Asian American Children and Families. You may begin once the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Good afternoon. My name is Ada Lynn. Uh, I'm the Program Coordinator at the Coalition for Asian American Children and Families. Thank you, Chair Steven, Chair Lee, and the rest of the council members for this opportunity. As the nation's only Pan-Asian Children's Advocacy Organization, Coalition for Children American, Coalition for Asian American Children and Families, CAF, aims to improve the health and well-being of Asian-American and Pacific Islander AAPI childrens and families in New York City. I'm the Program Coordinator for Asian American Children's Advocacy, Asian American Students Advocacy Project ASAP. ASAP is a youth leadership program where Asian-American youth, um, were joined across from the city. In ASAP, uh, we have a mental health campaign that aims to identify mental health needs and challenges faced by AAPI youth in New York City public high schools and to advocate for culturally humility and culturally responsiveness mental health services in schools and communities. Some of the challenges our youth face are that AAPI students generally lack comfort in discussing their feelings in schools or their life with their family, as well as with school teachers. Oftentimes, that's due to the fear and stigma around mental health, as well as biases from teachers and school staff, um, due to a result of model minority myth. AAPI students not only face mental health challenges, but there are also assumptions that schools, that there's also assumptions that students who perform well in school do not need mental health resources and does not have mental health needs. In fact, many students experience a great deal of performance anxiety that may be linked to their self-worth as well, as well as self-esteem. Moreover, there's also a lack of culturally responsiveness, um, staff and mental health provider that has, that has been mentioned in this hearing. Uh, we asked the city and DOE to provide detailed guidelines to principals to emphasize the needs of social worker, social coun, school counselors, as well as other mental health professionals in school. We believe that it is very critical to support and to raise awareness for holistic care options that can provide a large, um, cultural responsiveness care to the AAPI community. CBOs has been crucial in providing linguistic, accessible, and cultural responsiveness services for our community in a very long time. These direct connections allow our community members to feel welcome and included in the space. Therefore, the city government must provide funding for these AAPI leaders serving, um, CBO. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next panel will be Alice Buffkin from Citizens Committee for Children, Dawn Easter from Advocates for Children, Patrick Boyle, Volunteers of America, and Fiona Grady, Samaritans of New York. Alice, you may begin once the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Alice Buffkin. I am the Associate Executive Director for Policy and Advocacy at Citizens Committee for Children, multi-issue children's advocacy organization dedicated to ensuring every New York child is healthy, housed, educated, and safe. We're also a member of the Campaign for Effective Behavioral Support in Schools. Uh, thank you Chair Lee, Chair Stevens, and members of these committees for holding this very important hearing. I first have to just reiterate what we've heard throughout today. New York City's youth are facing a behavioral health crisis. We all know that even before COVID-19, we had seen rises in anxiety and depression and suicidal ideation in the state with a disproportionate impact on youth of color. Obviously, COVID-19 entered this landscape with a devastating effect. From a survey from youth involved in CCC's work, it found that 35% of young people reported needing mental health services, but only 42% of them actually received mental health care. In addition, recent CDC data shows that just this month, 32% of households with children in the New York City metro area reported children having behavioral health needs. And I can speak to conversations we have had with families and providers and tell you there are waitlists for services that are in the hundreds with families waiting months and months to get children and the care that they need today. So given all that, it's clear we need to take urgent action to address the mental health needs of children and youth in our city. I think the city council made an important step last year by funding a second year of the mental health continuum. However, without baselining this funding, our city will not be able to continue implementation of this important initiative. So we urge you to support this unprecedented collaboration between DOE Health and Hospitals and DOHMH by baselining, uh, funding in this year's budget. Additionally, we believe it's essential for the city to support the important work of school-based mental health clinics, which provide an array of diagnostic services and mental health treatments on site. They are uniquely able to draw down state and, and, uh, city funding, but as you've heard today, state and federal funding, but as you've heard today, there are a lot of challenges with reimbursement, and we're making sure that we can provide services for children without a diagnosis, for students who don't have insurance, and that we can provide those kinds of whole-school trainings and supports that make a clinic on-site not just a clinic, but also something integrated with a broader array of supports within a school. So we really feel there's an important opportunity to provide both additional funding and wraparound funding. And I'll, I'll echo what everyone else has said around workforce supports and, uh, enhancing, um, community engagement with schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dawn, you may begin once the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Dawn Easter. I'm the Director of the School Justice Project at Advocates for Children of New York. For 50 years, Advocates for Children has worked to ensure high-quality education for New York students who face barriers to academic success, focusing on students from low-income backgrounds. We are a member of Campaign for Effective Behavioral Supports in Schools, as well as a member of Dignity in Schools Campaign New York. Um, and we are here today to discuss the youth mental health crisis and urgent need for a comprehensive system to ensure that our young people have access to and receive behavioral and mental health supports in schools. Students are 21 times more likely to seek support for mental health issues at school than at a community-based clinic, if at all. And according to the School-Based Health Alliance, of students who successfully engage in mental health treatment, over 70% initiated services through school. Access to school-based mental health services can reduce disparities in access to behavioral health care as well. However, too often when New York City students are struggling, they are unable to access effective or even any behavioral and mental health supports in schools. In August 2022, audit by the Office of the State Controller found that nearly 40% of the DOE's 1,524 schools did not have one of the six mental health programs the DOE claims to offer in New York City schools. To date, the DOE has failed to do a comprehensive mapping of all the behavioral and mental health services, supports, and programs inside the New York City school system. So we are asking for the DOE, um, we are saying that they must make a public mapping of these behavioral and mental health services in schools and expand access to school-based mental health services to students equitably and comprehensively. In addition, we, um, wanna make a point that, that we urge the city to work towards creating comprehensive, integrated system of mental health behavioral health supports for students by making, thank you, I'm almost finished, um, we, we are requesting that the city work towards making the following investments and policy changes in fiscal year 2024, baselining $5 million for the Mental Health Continuum, the promising model integrating a range of direct services and developing strong partnerships between schools and hospital-based mental health clinics. So the Department of Education, Health and Hospitals, and the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene can provide more effective and efficient supports to students with significant mental health needs in high-need schools. Um, in addition, we are asking that the city expand and implement school-wide restorative justice practices in all schools. And finally, in addition to the mapping of citywide, um, behavioral and mental health supports, we urge the city to pass Intro Number 3-2022 to significantly limit the use of handcuffs on students in emotional crisis after strengthening the bill by making a few key amendments, including deleting the provisions related to NYPD training because law enforcement should not respond to students in emotional crisis. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. We look forward to continuing to work with members of these committees and ensure that all students receive the behavioral, mental health support they need to be able to learn and succeed in healing-centered schools, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Our next panelist will be Patrick Boyle from Volunteers of America. You may begin once the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Hi, my name is Patrick Boyle. I'm an Assistant Vice President for Public Policy here at Volunteers of America of Greater New York. We're a social services organization. Uh, we run, uh, many different shelters for different, uh, populations. Uh, we're a nonprofit developer of affordable and supportive housing. Um, and, uh, at Volunteers of America, we have a mission that really, uh, anchors all of the programming we do, and, and that's a mission towards ending homelessness in, in the region, um, through health, wealth building, and housing. Um, to reach that goal is gonna require breaking the cycle, uh, that feeds homelessness, and, and certainly, uh, mental health strains on our youth and children is a big part of that, of that cycle. Um, it's clear from, from us, from our staff, and our, uh, our many Tier Two family shelters, our, our DV survivor shelters that include families, um, and in our supportive housing programs that include families, um, that we are simply managing homelessness in, in this way, and we're not addressing those root causes. The system is really not built to get at those, uh, traumatizing triggers for, uh, for children and young people in particular. So the social workers that work in our shelter system, which is really where I'll kind of concentrate my, my comments today, um, you know, they're equipped to, to work with the family kind of unit as a whole, and they're empowered to do that. They look for developmental milestones for children to make sure, um, and assess whether the children seem to be hitting those milestones developmentally, but there's not much one-on-one interactions with the children themselves that requires parental consent, which is obviously, um, gonna be difficult to get in many circumstances. Um, and it's just not really a system that's, that's built for that in the contracts, which many other, uh, the speakers today have had spoken about and alluded to. Um, our clinicians that work at our shelters witness all sorts of, um, issues across this country. Um, and I'll just, I'll just wrap up to say, uh, that, you know, we second a lot of the comments that have been made by, by others on uh, the need to have cost of living adjustments for our, for our contracts, but there really needs to be a lot more focus on addressing root causes which include mental health concerns among our, among our youth and children, um, because it's just gonna continue to feed the homelessness cycle. So I'll, I'll direct you to the rest of my written testimony, which I'll submit, and I, I thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Next will be Fiona Grady from Samaritans of New York. I apologize for butchering your name. I know it's Irish or Scottish Gaelic, so I apologize in advance. But you may start when the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Thank you, Chairs Lee and Stevens, for the opportunity to speak today. I'm Fiona O'Grady, and I'm here representing the Samaritans of New York Suicide Prevention Center, who for 40 years has operated New York City's only anonymous and completely confidential suicide prevention hotline, thanks to your funding, and our education programs in all five boroughs. Almost a year ago, the U.S. Surgeon General Vivek Murthy issued an advisory on the youth mental health crisis stating it would be a tragedy if we beat back one health crisis, only to allow another to grow in its place. I'm here to echo these sentiments. Mental health outcomes for our children and young people have continued to deteriorate, and the impact is most severe on vulnerable populations. We must do more and sooner. In New York City, Latina adolescents have the highest rate of suicide attempts among their peers. Black children die by suicide at twice the rate of white children. One in three transgender youth in New York City have seriously considered suicide, and two in five report having attempted suicide. Two-thirds of LGBTQ-plus youth said their mental health has deteriorated because of recent LGBTQ-plus legislation across the country. 36% of New York City high school students report feeling persistently sad and hopeless, and as we know, mental health emergency department visits have increased by 50% for adolescent females across the U.S. Again, we must do more and sooner to support our youth and the providers who are tasked with caring for them. In this constantly changing, fast-paced landscape we currently occupy, caregivers are often playing catch-up to the pressing needs of young people. It is paramount that providers are given the tools, education, training, and support they need. Samaritan's education program adapts to real-time concerns and doesn't take a one-size-fits-all approach. In FY22, with council funding, Samaritans provided this essential suicide prevention training and awareness education training and support to 1,900 guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, and more, working in hundreds of New York City schools, CBOs, and government agencies. And we're bolstered by our hotline, which is staffed by, um, uh, hundreds volunteers who donate $800,000 in free labor, being one of the most cost-effective, um, crisis services. We appreciate and applaud the council's We appreciate and applaud the council's continued commitment to making our city's youth and well-being a top priority. We're here to help, and if you have any questions, we're also available. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll now move to...
We'll now move... This is probably safe for my program, and you want to...
Okay, so next we'll move to Jolene Johnson. You may begin once the sergeant queues you.
Time has begun.
Print out a lot, and then show notes. And then I'll show all the notes that you did for that client, and you can print it out for me. You can print out each one. You see all the notes? It's all the notes you wrote. So you can print them out, just in case you forget, but I'm sure you're getting...
Sorry, Jolene. Sorry, we're having a little trouble hearing you. Jolene, are you prepared to testify? You may begin once the sergeant queues you. We're going to unmute you.
Yeah.
Time has begun.
If... okay. All right. Next, I'm going to call Lauren Galloway.
Time has begun.
Next is Rohini Singh. And then Dante Bravo. If any of you are on Zoom, please raise your hand. Jolene Johnson, if you would like to testify, please raise your hand right now on Zoom. Thank you. If there's anyone present in the room or on Zoom that hasn't had the opportunity to testify, please raise your hand. Seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimony... Dawn, I believe you have your hand up, but you've already testified.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know Rohini Singh is on my team, and either I or she was going to testify. And so she's not here because I testified on behalf of our organization. And I just wanted to add, since I have a couple seconds, it's just that we had a much more complete testimony. So I would love for you to be able to read our written comments, and there's a report attached as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just for further notice, if someone's not going to be testifying on Zoom, we would just ask that they use the live stream on the council website, just for further notice. Thank you so much. So we're going to wrap it up. Seeing no one else, I'd like to note that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by emailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Chair Lee, we have concluded public testimony for this hearing.
Okay, great. I just want to thank all the folks that are online right now for all the tremendous work that you guys do. I'm very familiar with a lot of your organizations, and so I just want to say thank you for the continued work that you are doing on behalf of the city. And I also want to thank again all of our staff and Chair Stevens. And with that, I'm going to conclude the hearing for today. Thank you so much, everyone.